Good afternoon and welcome to our new digs. It's coming to you live from Jones Magnet Middle School while our council chambers are being rehabbed. So I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Present.
Councilman Gray.
Present.
Councilman Hobbs.
Present.
Councilman Moffett.
Present.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Mayor Tuck.
Present. Like to actually turn the meeting over to our city manager who will give us this afternoon's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up on our agenda this afternoon is our annual briefing on our Safe and Clean Initiative. This is an initiative that we started several years ago to address an uptick in violence, but understanding that that uptick in violence has many root causes and many forms that need to be addressed to ensure that we are as safe as we can possibly be. So it's not just a police issue, and frankly, it's not even just a government issue, it's a community issue. And that's why we have a comprehensive initiative called Safe and Clean to really try to work on these issues that all communities are facing. Of course, we care more about Hampton than we do about other communities, but it is something that all of our communities are facing. This one happens to be pretty timely. We do this every year in the summer, but as everyone knows, we've had an uptick in violence recently, a particular spat of crimes. And as part of today's agenda, you will certainly hear from Chief Salt on HPD's efforts and initiatives and the statistics. But Steve Bond is going to kick it off, and you're going to hear from a variety of staff today, Steve, Sinethia, White, and the chief, about the comprehensive approach that we're taking and the progress that we've made over the last year and the goals that we're setting for our upcoming year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Just by way of a little background, Safe and Clean was a... Safe and Clean is the city's effort, adopted as the manager said, addressing the issues of violence as well as the issues of having safe, clean, and livable communities throughout our city. It's a partnership and an initiative with a number of different government departments, but I don't want, as you can see, the number of government departments that are listed, but we only work in partnership with the community and with other organizations. So it's not just a government effort, although those are all of the departments that are a part of the city's effort. Goals of Safe and Clean, of course, are to decrease incidents of violent crime and serious property crimes, to reduce blight in our community, as well as to ensure that our housing stock is kept to safe standards and clean standards of living for every member of our community. We implement new strategies every year to try to make sure that we achieve those goals. And once again, this is all done in partnership with organizations in the community as well as neighborhood leaders and associations. The whole goal of Safe and Clean is to build trust and to build relationships between the citizens who live in our neighborhoods and city departments and city officials to make sure that we provide the best communities for them to grow and to reach their potential. This is a map which details the Safe and Clean areas in our community. And at this time, I'm going to welcome the chief of police up to talk about some of the crime statistics in the Safe and Clean areas.
Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney, thank you for the opportunity to brief you. We're going to talk a little bit about the state of the city in regards to crime. We were making some progress towards the beginning of the year, and then we've hit the July, and it seems like the summer heat has just turned on the fire in regards to some of the problems that we're facing. We're also going to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that we are taking to address both in the short and long term as we go forward. Once we complete my presentation to you, we'll get more in depth of some of the longer term and some of the strategies that we have involving our youth. One of the things that I want to mention right off the bat is that we're just finishing up this week our class with the school system in regards to the Hamptons Academy, where we're going to kick that off for the Public Safety and Law Academy is going to kick off in the fall. We're doing immersion courses right now for some of the teachers that are involved in that program, and that will finish up this Friday. That's one of the things that we're very, very proud of. You're going to hear an awful lot more about what the city's doing in regards to engaging our youth a little bit later. But this is mainly what we're going to talk about today. We'll end up talking about the new app that we have, Connect App, that is already providing some information to us from the community itself. Kind of giving a historical perspective of what crime has been doing, this is overall Part 1 offenses, these are the most serious... These are the most serious offenses that we look at. By no means is it all of the offenses we look at. These are the things like burglary, larceny, robbery, murder, those type things, the Part 1 UCR offenses. And we were establishing a downward trend until 2014. This is the year that we had the Ferguson Incident. This is when turmoil started coming up across the nation. We really started to seeing increases in crime nationwide and also locally. But we've been very steady in being in the middle of the pack in overall crime in regards to the seven cities. We're just a percentage point. We keep changing back and forth with Newport News of being dead in the middle, just by a percentage point or two from all crime. And all crime is mainly driven by property crime, not by violent crime. If we look at our violent crime, we always stay or have traditionally stayed very much in the top three as far as safety goes. And if you look at the differences in the rate per 1,000 for the full year of 2016, we're at 2.78, where the next highest is in the four range. So there's a pretty good leap in the amount of violent crime that's between the two. So Hampton still, although we've got a lot of challenges, we're seeing, and you're going to see more about some of the challenges we're dealing with, with weapons law violations and things like that, they're absolutely on the increase. You know, we're going to continue to work with the community to keep our safe ratings within this area and hopefully improve. Again, this is a year-to-date comparison, so it kind of gives you an idea through the past years where we have stood in regards to crimes in the first half of the year. And so if you look at just the first half of the year for '12, '13, '14, all the way up to '17, you can see that we have hit an area right here in the summer where we started picking up. We're even a little bit ahead of last year. What's driving a lot of that is we see again is some of the property crimes. We are about in about, oh, I want to say, let's see, about 40-some incidents more property crime this year than 2016, and we've got about 26, 27 incidents more violent crime this year than we did last year. Again, here's a weapons law violation, and this is one of the things we want to pay attention to. When we talk about weapons law violations, we're talking about shootings, we're talking about possession of illegal firearms, we're talking about shots being discharged in the street, houses being struck by bullets, things like that. And so you can notice that there has been an increase since about 2015, starting to go up. And you can see some of the types of weapons offenses that we track here, accidental shootings, brandishings of firearms, discharge into occupied building, firearms and possessions of drugs. And again, we've gone from 2016 to 2017, year-to-date, we're up about 50 incidents. When we look at weapon law violations with the mid-year comparison by month, we were starting to make progress last month. We have been doing some initiatives in regards to the beginning, right before Christmas last year, we started the Gun Crime Task Force. We'll go into some depth about that. But we've also learned that taking guns off of the street, which we've been very successful at doing over the last six months, is not really getting us the results that we want. So we're preparing to modify that, and you'll hear about that through some of the council-approved actions with NIBIN and that sort of thing here in just a moment. One of the things I wanted to note was that while the gun violations are going up, our enforcement has been going up. And this is a result of the Gun Crime Task Force and the strategies that we've been putting in place. What we have seen is that we have seen an increase, you know, we were at right about 350 incidents of weapons violations, but we've had about 246 weapons law arrests associated as well. So it's a pretty good arrest-to-incident ratio when you talk about crimes occurring on the street. But we're still not quite getting the results and reductions that we need to get. Part of this is we need to get the guns out of the youth sands, and we need to identify and stop the serial shooters, those that are going from neighborhood to neighborhood and firing shots and sometimes randomly hitting people, sometimes just going after people and shooting at them, intended targets, and missing them. We need to go after anyone who fires a weapon within the city lemons. As we look at the... By month, again, these numbers pretty much parallel percentage-wise of the rates of crime by month if you look at those. So June, we had fewer incidents of weapons law violations, but we had fewer arrests. We had more in May, we had more arrests in May. The Gun Crime Task Force is an initiative that we started in November of last year when we realized that we had a lot more guns on the street. We wanted to go after those guns. We knew that guns were being... Were part of, if you read some of the initiatives in the prosecutions in New York in regards to gun trafficking, a lot of that was being funneled from Hampton. We had two individuals indicted in that roundup. And as a result of all of those investigative efforts, we knew that we had a lot of guns on the street, and some of the violence associated was related to some of the gun trafficking going on as well. We initiated the Gun Crime Task Force in November. By January, not seeing the results, so we modified. We increased and doubled the number of folks that we have on the Gun Crime Task Force. We now have two sergeants and 16 officers that are on this task force, that we can maintain officers on the street every day, out there specifically focused on guns, gangs, and drugs, and particularly those illegal firearms and those gun crime violations. We're supported by Crime Analysis to help us look at the areas and the individuals particularly that are involved in gun crimes and starting to go after them. One of the things that we did here recently, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in depth, was held a violent crime summit just about four weeks ago. And that involved a meeting of all of the agency heads for this area that run task forces, whether they're federal or state, and both the local or the commonwealth and US attorneys were involved in a meeting to come together and decide how do we deal better with these serial shooters? And how do we deal, now that the federal guidelines for prosecution have changed a little bit, how do we deal with the new guidelines that are coming down to be more effective in reducing the shootings and gun violations that are occurring on our streets? During the month of June alone, this is some of the results that we had, with 13 firearms being taken off the street, 23 felony charges. So we are making charges, and we are charging folks that are in illegal possession of firearms. And if you look at the overall initiatives, we've taken almost 100 firearms off. This is just the Gun Crime Task Force, not... You can just about double these numbers or maybe even add more than that to it when you look at the number of weapons were taken off the street, when you add patrol to it and the other investigations and the vice squads and that sort of thing out there. But at the end of the day, we are arresting people, we are taking guns off the street, but it's generally a few number of people who are causing the most harm in the city. And so when we look at even the success that we have there, we needed to look at a better way to address things. And this was that meeting that we held with the... Pulled together a violent crime summit about four weeks ago. We held it at NASA. We brought in all the agency head leaders, and we talked about what are we doing currently? Is it working correctly? Should we continue along this path? And how do we de-conflict all the information that we have going on? Because we have a Safe Streets Task Force under the FBI, we have a DEA Task Force, we have a High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Task Force with Homeland Security Investigations, we have a number of different task forces out there, all of them work in different cases. And we do case de-confliction, but in each one of those cases, there are individuals who are out there causing harm on the street today, and we can't wait six to 12 months to take them off the street. So how do we deal with those individuals that need to get off the street right now? And that was the purpose behind this meeting. So now we have a reoccurring meeting that occurs every two weeks where they talk about specific case information and identify those folks that need to come off the street very quickly. What we're... The goal is to focus on serial shooters, and this is not necessarily those folks that are committing the homicides, because when a homicide occurs, we put all kinds of resources into that, and we run that really into the ground as much as we can. This is those shootings that occur day-to-day that might occur, one that occurs over on the Chesapeake side, one that occurs on the west side. How do we link those together? How do we know who's pulling the trigger on those shots fired, calls, and the shell casings that are left on the ground? And we know that they occurred. Those are the individuals that we need to get a hold of, because eventually one of those bullets are going to hit somebody. So every two weeks, they're meeting. The meeting is going to be held and is going to be facilitated by the prosecutors so that there's neutral ground, and we're going to try to find the best way and where we get, pardon the pun, the biggest bang for the buck on trying to target these individuals that are doing the serial shooting and doing the most harm in our community. Council recently approved funding for a NIBIN system, National Integrated Ballistic Information System. This is key to what our strategy is going to be, because this system will allow us to quickly identify serial shootings or linking shooting locations to shooting locations and weapons to multiple shooting locations. So we can determine if a shooting occurs on West Mercury and another one occurs on Todd's Lane, and there are shell casings left at the scene. We can very quickly compare those. The goal is to compare those within 24 to 48 hours, get that information back to the investigators, and let them start running this stuff down, linking these cases together. If we seize a weapon off of a car stop, we automatically test that weapon, run the shell casings against all those that we have in the system, and then maybe we can tell that we got this weapon off of John Smith, and that weapon was used in these two shootings. And so that gives us the lead to ask different questions when we get that person at the police station. Now, we've been kind of delayed in the implementation of this because we're doing this in partnership with Newport News. And Newport News had a change in city managers, so it slowed down the purchasing process of that. But I'm glad to announce that that has been approved. We are moving forward, and we will be initiating that in the coming months. As a matter of fact, the MOU is ready for my signature and for the manager's signature from the ATF to make that a reality on our side. Again, we talked about multi-jurisdictional information gathering. We're going to... We've got our analysts working together. There's a collaboration with analysts now that is at a higher level than it has been in the past. And again, it's all about focusing on our violence that's occurring on our streets. We want to review juveniles who have frequent interactions involving narcotics and firearm incidents. There was an article in the paper this morning about ShowCap over Newport News. Until the manager mentioned it to me this morning, that's a name that I hadn't heard since the 90s. And I did not realize that there was Virginia legislation that's on the books that allows us to do something that we were trying to do a year ago here, if you remember the hub concept. When we identify these individuals who are the worst that need to be taken off the street, there's always peripherals. There's individuals that we need to do intervention with. We need to try to get them back on the straight and narrow. The biggest holdup, when we sat down with all of the stakeholders involved in this, was the legal ability to share information. ShowCap is the answer to that. If you look at the legislation, it allows us, once we have a juvenile who has been adjudicated either in a shooting, a robbery, or murder, or something serious, drug dealing, gang affiliation, then we can share information among the service providers, and it is a case management system to really put in an action plan to help that youth along and try to get them back on track. So we will be looking very seriously at that, reconvening our group and informing them of this legislation that has been out there frankly since the 90s, and taking advantage of that. And I'm very excited to actually hear about that. We absolutely talk to death about the prioritization of targets, but we want to identify the individuals who are causing the most harm and the most incidents out there on the street. Take any questions on that before I have Lieutenant Price come up, I assume he's in the building, to talk about the new app that we have.
Any questions?
Chief, I just want to ask you, when... I know serial, the serial shooters, it can become very serious, but if somebody's considered to be a serial shooter, what are the consequences for that? I mean, is that really that tough of a crime where we can make a dent?
Well, the locations where we have these shots being fired, there's usually a story behind them. And what we're trying to do is provide... There's no... And I hate this other pun. There's no silver bullet to this. You know, this is not going to be the magic thing that cures all the crime. What we're looking for is bits of information that piece together a story. And so when we have shots fired out in front of a house, and that occurs once or twice, there's something going on there. Either there's some kind of gang affiliation, somebody's mad at a person in that house, and/or, you know, if the same car gets shot in twice, or the same name pops up in the investigation. But we always lack a lot of information. We're very good, it's kind of like we've heard about ShotSpotter, and we want to get out there, and one of the things out of ShotSpotter is you get shell casings. We get shell casings really quickly. We get locations where shootings occur very quickly through 911. It's not a very good, efficient use of our funds at $300,000 for three square miles per year to put ShotSpotter out there when we're getting those shell casings probably on 85% of the cases now. What we need to do is be able to link those together, strengthen them, and then it depends on the circumstances behind the case. Oftentimes, we'll take a crime gun, and I didn't mention E-Trace, but we will... When we seize a gun, we will actually trace that weapon. And if that weapon has been used in a crime, and there's a short period of time between the time it was purchased, and we call it time to crime, then that gives us another investigative lead. Who bought the gun? How did it get in the hands of the bad guy? Was it a straw purchase? Why was the gun used? How many different locations was it used in? And so just one shooting may be a misdemeanor that the judge might not take very seriously. But if we link it to multiple incidents of shooting, and then we multiply... We add that to a straw purchase of that firearm, and perhaps being able to put that firearm in the hands of a convicted felon, all of a sudden, you're taking a serial person who's causing a lot of harm in our community off the streets. And keep in mind, a lot of the robberies that we get that you see up here are robberies from persons over drugs, over other firearms, trying to rip off other firearms and things like that. The innocent crimes are less, you know, those truly innocent people who are being robbed are typically less than those that are involved in some type of high-risk lifestyle. Doesn't mean the risk isn't out there, being bluntly, but it does mean that there's opportunities for us to take advantage of this with every little bit of intelligence we can get. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, Chief, you mentioned that from your analysis of the, you know, the shootings and all that are going on, that, you know, it's really, I think, how you described, is a few people who are causing a lot of trouble, and that we have these serial shooters, and you talked about identifying them. Is that all gang-related?
A good percentage of it is, some of it is not. It's kind of concerning that a lot of younger people are getting their hands on guns. The biggest thing is, is we don't know what we don't know. And what we don't know is how many of these shootings where shell casings are found on the ground can we tie to individuals, and are they part of the gangs? We're making a lot of assumptions that they are simply because of the area where they're... It occurs in an area where gangs operate, or we get a description of a car that might match something that a gang member drives. But these systems will help put that all in place and help us firm that up. If I had to put a percentage on it this time, I would say probably 50-plus percent would be in some way, shape, or form tied back to a gang or some kind of gang-related activity.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, this is more a comment than a question, but I can recall some years ago, this is to illustrate the value of the NIBIN system. Some years ago, there was a homicide at Shell &amp; Bell, and when the crime scene unit went out there, they found dozens and dozens and dozens of shell casings. There was no realistic way for them to determine how long they'd been there, whether they were connected, because it was taking so long for analysis from... And really, they were faced with, do we really collect dozens of shell casings when we know there were two shots fired here? And ask the forensic science to analyze all of that. So having the capacity to do that and get a result within a short period of time is going to be really transformational, I think.
It is, and nothing has changed as of today until we get this system up and running. We can get that information, but it takes six, five to six months to get it, and by that time, that weapon has changed hands many times probably out on the street if we haven't seized it. And this, and that's the goal, 24 to 48 hours. Now, one of the things that we're going to do to make sure that we follow up on that information is we're going to modify the Gun Crime Task Force. We're going to take a couple of people off of it, we're going to take a couple of people from investigations, and we're going to assign them to follow up on these leads. So we've got the street component that are dealing with the day-to-day, and those people are out there actively shooting on the street as a deterrent and to help reduce all kinds of crimes in the neighborhood. But then we're going to have an investigative component to augment and to assist property crimes and the other investigators and the crime against person investigators to focus on getting the weapons and the serial shooters off. Now, keep in mind that these serial shooters may or may not be part of the same group that the task force folks are looking at, and that low-hanging fruit of the most violent people that are in the city. They may or may not be part of that same group. When those overlap is when they're going to get very hard in special prosecution. But we have to be able to identify those that are pulling triggers, the trigger pullers out there on the street. There are other things that we are doing. I don't want you to think this is it. This is, we're just being respectful of the council's time. I know you've got a long agenda. Our real-time crime center, we have just started work on that. We've gotten access now to its location, and the build-out has started there. We've been working very closely with council and mayor and the city manager to get funding, to get that up and running. That will allow us to start partnering with private locations to get camera information out to us. Lieutenant Price is going to come up here in just a second, talk about the public version of this app empowering citizens through Connect Protect. We just had a meeting yesterday about a new app, the new version for the police department that allow us to take the real-time crime information and pump it out to police officers. It'll allow, when an officer drives into a particular neighborhood, if we've got a BOLO to be on the lookout for, or we've got special information or something that occurs, when they drive into that neighborhood, it'll pop up on their screen. So it's no longer do they have to remember what was read at roll call, it'll geographically pop up and be notified and pop up on their screen when that information occurs. That's the free app that was given to us and donated by the Wessons, and we thank them very much for their donation, but we're exploring new ways to do that. Council's gracious approval in the budget for the cell phones allows that to make that happen for every officer that we have in the department, not just those that have computers in their cars. With that, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Price to talk about this great application.
Chief, one moment, please. We've got council members with questions.
Make sure my mic's working. Yes, it's working. Chief, I would like to first thank you and your department for the fine work that you all do each and every day, and I'll thank you for this presentation this afternoon. I have a question, and it's, you know, it's something dear to me that we've been working on for a while, and of course, when there's an uptick, everybody focuses in on it. I want to speak just briefly to the homicides that we had, starting back from 2015, I believe it was, 15, 2016, 23, and to date, I believe we've had five. Would that be accurate?
I think we're more at eight with the last three that have occurred over the Fourth of July week.
Now, could you share just briefly the demographics of those that were murdered and defenders?
Yep. Pretty much, it's been standard across the board. It's generally, our homicides are in the 90% range of victims, of being between the ages of... are in the 90% range of victims, of being between the ages of 14 and 30, African-American males. Suspects, basically the same, within that same range. There are exceptions to that. They are, we have seen upticks in crime in, like, the Riprap Road area. We've seen a couple of homicides there, a couple of shootings there. I've got a whole separate slate of information for council when they want to see that, if they want to see that in regards to it. But it's, that's pretty much the demographics that we see.
Well, I ask that because I continuously think that oftentimes, we as leaders and those of us in the public, I know law enforcement is very well-informed, but we have this new epidemic that is sweeping the country with regard to opioids. Could you share how many died over the last three years from opioids, if you have that data available?
I know that we had 18 deaths last year from opioids here in the city. The year before, were slightly fewer, but our record-keeping wasn't quite as accurate at that time. That's when we were understanding the beginnings of it. This year, I think we are at about eight, about equal with the homicide. It's about equal the homicide rate. We lose as many to opioids as we do to, as to violent crime. It's very concerning, and it knows no demographic lines. It doesn't matter if you're young, old, you know, white, black. If you were issued prescription drugs and they were an opioid, and you were over-medicated, chances are that you become addicted very quickly and very easily. And that can very quickly, when you start buying illicit opioids, they're tainted with fentanyl, and they're tainted with variations, synthetic opioids, that are just 10,000 times stronger than the regular heroin, and that's what causes a lot of our fatalities and overdoses.
Do you have any specific statistics on the demographics of those deaths last year and this year?
Yes, sir, we do. And I can get those for you. I don't have them directly in front of me. But it is surprising the number of older citizens that we have. It is a much more diverse demographic than, say, our homicides. A lot are Caucasian, and we get them up into the 60s.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to raise that as a concern. And I think those of us in leadership and those of us in the community, while oftentimes, we're focused on the homicides, as we should be, but there's another epidemic that is taking place across the country in our community, and I think we need to continually take a look at that as well. And thank you for your response.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because we're going to be starting another series of meetings with U.S. Attorney's Office, reviewing the video "Chasing the Dragon," which talks about the effects of heroin and always chasing that initial high that opioids provide, and sort of awareness, and also trying to reach out to provide assistance. Lots going on in the backgrounds to assist in that area as well.
Chief, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but we do have Narcan available for the officers to actually, if they respond and are in time, to try to bring back someone. Do you happen to know how many lives you've saved? Because I think the death toll from the opioid abuse would actually probably be higher, were it not for our deployment of Narcan.
Yeah, I know we're over half a dozen saves from Narcan. And keep in mind that that's the officers who are doing it. You know, the fire department has had it for quite some time, and they get to the scene, and they issue Narcan. But we have worked with the Careplex, and they manage our Narcan system for the police officers. And it's amazing the number of saves that the officers actually have. We've got one officer who's saved two different people, and has been recognized for that.
I only bring this up because I think Councilman Moffett's point was that the opioid crisis is equally, or perhaps even more so, taking lives, and that we can't lose focus from that. And the fact that the numbers ended up being the same so far year-to-date is really a distortion, because were it not for the deployment of the Narcan, you actually probably would find that there were more individuals who had overdosed as opposed to had been killed.
Absolutely. The effects of opioid, direct and indirect, are not calculable at the moment, but it would not surprise me if the effects were much greater than those touched by violent crime.
Chief, I have a few questions, but I'm going to save those, because I think part of your initial slide was that you'd have a strategy thing after you do the apps?
Actually, no, sir. So go ahead.
All right. Well, a couple of things. One, the, and I guess you kind of answered it. I was going to ask, is the Gun Crimes Task Force part of investigations or operations? And you said you're going to take some people out of operations to work with them. I'm sorry, people out of investigations work with them.
It's, it is technically managed by the captain and the deputy, and the assistant chief under investigations, but operates in uniform on the street as an operational support unit. So the reason for that is to make sure that we have continuity and fluid flow of information from what's learned on the street. It's a composite unit. You have traffic unit that's made up of the Gun Crime Task Force, still doing traffic stuff, but enforcing traffic laws in those areas where we have these shootings occurring. You have the gang, some of the gang task force members associated with it, so they can specialize on any gang stuff that they come involved in it. We have officers from the field, so that they can use their contacts with their friend officers from the field. And then we have investigators in it that try to make sure that we got good 360 communication across the board. But there is a sergeant over the traffic unit, who is one of the sergeants, and there's a sergeant that was promoted, was in patrol for a while, who's come back over and managed the day-to-day operations on the street. There is a third component that we're talking about now, that will be an investigative component that will operate under investigations to look at those NIBIN hits and things that will complement that.
Okay. And Chief, there's, I guess, certainly within the last week, when you had the, what's it, like 10 shootings within maybe a few days over the Fourth of July?
Yes, sir.
And I've gotten phone calls, and I think most of the council members have gotten some of the emails, and I've had some face-to-face things with people who are feeling like, you know, it's not safe in Hampton. And then there is a site that someone sent me a link to, and I can pull it up. It's, gracious. Area Vibes, are you familiar with that?
I looked at that earlier today. It looks, and I'm not sure where they get their statistics from.
Right.
The statistics are, I'm not, I don't know what the spread of their statistics are.
Right.
But I started looking at it in comparison with other cities. You know, for example, you look at it in regards to Atlanta, Atlanta gets an F, we get it like a C minus or something. It's hard to say. There's a lot of realty sites that get data, and they look at it from a different algorithm. The data that they had somewhat looked accurate, but I know the homicides were inaccurate, some of the shooting numbers were inaccurate, but it depends on the time span. Are they looking at it as an annual number, or are they looking at it as a fiscal year number? I don't know what the comparatives are. But if you go in and you kind of look at us versus Newport News, it would tend to support, you know, the difference between us and Newport News, if you look at the violent crime rating there that we just showed.
Right. And then I had a retired officer send me a text about what he would do. Now, he's not in your position. But I did go back and look at an article from August 2, 2013, the Daily Press. It says Hampton homicide rate more than double compared with 2012. And this may have actually come after Councilman Moffett had his, gracious, what is it, I guess, for now?
Community.
Community, okay, community meeting at YH Thomas. And one of the statements in there are actually a couple of things. It says, "During a special meeting in July, Moffett and other council members said they planned to allocate additional money to the police department for increased patrols and surveillance equipment in response to the increase in violent crime this year. Police began their door-to-door campaign this week to increase visibility in high-crime areas. The idea is that police arrive in a mobile command unit and interact with residents in a particular neighborhood." And here's a quote from Acting Chief Townshend at the time. It says, "Many of the homicides that have occurred so far this year, we've closed by arrest. The ones we haven't closed are where we feel like there is a probability of additional crimes, where we're going to concentrate our efforts." Now, there was one, I guess it was over in Rotary area, and I don't want to pick out a neighborhood, but the sense is, I think, a number of those people who were involved are known to the police. Is that, is that part of our strategy, is that we kind of, we determine that maybe there'll be retaliatory behaviors, and so we try and maybe staff up or ramp up in particular areas, just to try and cut down on that?
Yes, we actually go in and work with neighborhoods. And at the end of this, I've got a short video that we're going to be releasing, a longer version. It's kind of like a documentary, The Gun Crime Task Force. It'll talk, and actually interview one of the neighbors, talking about some of the things that we do. But we do, we do everything that's in that article. We still go out in the neighborhoods. We take the mobile command post out there. We saturate neighborhoods, try to find out. One of the big issues with problem-solving is, we want to make sure that we're addressing what the community believes is a problem, not just what we think is a problem. But certainly, anytime we have a shooting, we're analyzing very in-depthly, coordinating with us and with Newport News to try to make sure, if we think there's a retaliation going to happen, we're on top of it. We just paid a visit to an individual today, or maybe last night, that was released from prison, who had gang affiliation, and had communicated that he was going to be doing some retaliation. We went up, knocked on the door, and said, "Guess who's watching?" And we actually beat the probation officer to the door. And so we are being very proactive in trying to do that. Many of these shootings that occur, we have officers in the area that hear the shots, or are within earshot of the incidents that are occurring because of the saturations that we're doing. But it is the follow-up that you're talking about, that we've got to be intense on.
Okay. And related to the drug seizures, and I noticed that heroin's like 2.10 grams. It's lower than cocaine, marijuana. If we talk about the opioid epidemic, is it kind of, I hate to say victimless, but is it something that people are doing maybe in their homes or in their vehicles or something, so it's not an exchange of stuff on the street? So when we talk about arrests in that area or seizures, it's not as high, say, as marijuana or cocaine, because those are generally on-street types of exchanges?
You can't really equate the weight of marijuana, or the weight of cocaine, and the weight of heroin equally across the board. The potency of cocaine is much more than heroin, I mean, than marijuana. And there are some types of marijuana that's much more potent than others. For example, from a heroin perspective, an opioid perspective, some of the opioids that are out there now, if you look at the tip of this pen, that is a fatal dose of an opioid, a fentanyl or a carfentanil. That's a very, very small amount. And so it takes very, very little to do that. And so when you look at the numbers here, and this is just the Gun Crime Task Force, that are taking things off the street without, you know, the big investigations to take the dealers and all of that off.
The only reason I ask that way is because of, in looking at the stats that are on our website for 2016 Group A offenses table, the number or the percentage between the different years, say, we've got a decrease of about 4% in drug narcotic offenses from 2015 to 2016. And so we're talking about an epidemic, and one would think that the numbers are rising. But actually, if you go all the way back even to 2012, 2013, the numbers are coming down. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, is it, what's happening?
Particularly with heroin, I give you an idea that, back in the day when I was working the street and, you know, jumping out of cars, and I was younger, and I could do that sort of thing. The percentage of purity of heroin was about 3% to 4% on the street. Now it's upwards to 60, 80%. Now we're dealing with fentanyl, which is, you know, 1,000 times more powerful than that. Carfentanils that are even 1,000 times more powerful than fentanyl. So the issues that we're dealing with, it might be less weight, but more strength.
Right.
And it is one of those drugs that, you know, a lot of the opioids that we deal with are prescription medications. They're the ones that don't rise to the level of being illegal to possess to begin with, but they're issued prescriptions, and then they over-prescribe, then the doctor, for whatever reason, they no longer are getting a prescription or whatever, and then they turn to the illicit market to try to continue to fulfill that feeling under the medication. So it's a broad issue the country is struggling with right now. How do we deal with it? How do we work with it? I know CSP and some of the others are working with us on that to provide additional support for our community, and we're very much engaged with that group. We've got a great, a really good working group together working on this problem.
Right. Well, Chief, I'd also, I want to join Councilman Moffett and the rest of council members, in thanking you and what HPD is doing. And I want to reassure, I guess, our residents that, you know, this is a safe city, that some of the crimes are happening, particularly some of the shootings, are people who have known each other. And if those individuals would cooperate, when we do our investigations, we'd do a better job with taking those individuals off the street. So again, thank you very much.
Cooperation is exactly what we need, particularly on some of these shootings. Lieutenant Price?
Mayor, council, the city manager, how are you guys? Happy to be here. I want to talk to you just for a second about Connect Protect mobile app. As you know, I'm in charge of the community engagement unit. This app is a fantastic tool that was provided to us for free. Like the chief mentioned, it's part of a two-pronged approach that we're getting free. One is external communication, a two-way communication with us and with the public talking to us back. And so Connect Protect, whoa, try again. There we go. Grant funded from the Wasson family for free. And there is also a 311 app. If you haven't downloaded these yet, please do. They are amazing. I will tell you, as the administrator of the Connect Protect app, I am truly astounded at how much the public is using this program. They can send us a tip for free, 100% completely anonymous. They can attach a photo or a video to it. In fact, the first video we received was from a resident at Buckaroo Beach, who was observing someone utilizing drugs. And we get it literally, as they hit send, we receive it. Now, to show you how this will work, and we're going to bring it all together, is then we can take that information and transfer it to the Shield Connect app and send it directly to the officers working the street. So not only will they know that there's been a tip there, but they're going to get the video to see what the guy looks like that's actually right there at that moment, which is amazing technology from a guy that's been doing this for 20 years. Those pictures and videos are also geo-tagged. What does that mean? It means we get longitude and latitude on a Google map, so it can't get easier for those, for like me, who's not a brilliant guy. I can look at that map and go, this is exactly where the individual is. And the cool thing about it is, if you don't send it at that moment, let's say for some reason, and I hope you're not driving, but let's say you take a picture while you're driving, and you go, "I don't want to send it right now because I'm driving," where you stop and hit send, it still geo-taggs where the picture was taken. So we still know where to go. To date, we, well, and I did this at the beginning of, or end of last week. So as of last week, we had received 75 tips already since May 6, which is phenomenal for a new program. It's growing every day. As you download it, you will see we also have the ability to send out push notifications. I can send out an area to your neighborhood. So instance, I can send a message directly to Phoebus, Fox Hill, with, or I can send it to the entire city, or I can actually draw a geo-fence, if you will, on a map, and send it to only residents that have their location on and are in that area. And so this morning, I put out, we have a triathlon, the Tidewater Triathlon on Saturday. I sent out a push notification alerting residents that there will be traffic congestion on Mallory and Mercury Boulevard between 6:00 and 11:00. So make alternate plans or take an alternate route if you're going to be in that area. And so I can actually pull that message down after Saturday, so that there'll be new messages, and they'll get the newest, most current when they log right on. So great technology. I'm really excited. It's part of our collaboration and partnerships with the community. And my job is getting the community to work with us and receiving these tips in the fashion that we have, and how many we, it means that we're working, and citizens want to work with us. So I thank them, anybody that's listening and using it. I thank them, and I ask them to keep it up. So anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for being the administrator of this app. I downloaded it as a result of a meeting at, one of the officers shared it with us at a community meeting, and I had the opportunity to learn what not to do. So I'm going to need some additional OJT.
Okay.
I think it's excellent. I just was, I guess I had an expectation or anticipation that I would get more push notifications. I also learned by trial and error that I needed to make sure that I put it on my home screen, so I didn't have to go searching for it.
Okay.
But I just think it's an awesome app, and hopefully, there's some video or something that we can go to to get some additional training regarding how to use it. But I'm a endorser of it, and one of the tips that you all may have received is mine.
I wasn't going to put that out there because it's anonymous, but you did put your David phone number.
Yes.
And for that, I thank you. And you can also disable locations, so that it's not running in your background if you have an it's not running in your background if you have an iOS phone, because that can help drain the battery as well. But it's fantastic and I thank you for using it.
Any questions from Council?
And Jason, just for those who might not inherently know how to get that.
Sure.
You go to the App Store and you type in Connect Protect Hampton Police and install.
Yeah, you can go to the Android Store or the App Store through iTunes. It's available free for Android and iOS phones. And actually, it's even easier than that. You can just type in Hampton Police and it will come up in both store. So it's very user-friendly, very easy to find. Yes, ma'am?
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things we hear from residents often is that they want to help, but they're afraid to give their name or their location for fear of retaliation. And I always like to take the opportunity to emphasize that if you call into 911, we are not going to release your name, where your location, or where we got the information. We also have Crime Line, of course. But this new app gives another tool for people. And I love the video and photography because it really does give the police officer that additional information that Lieutenant Price mentioned. But this too, as was mentioned, but I wanted to emphasize, is completely anonymous. So for those residents who do have that fear, this is a way that they can participate and be part of the solution without having to, you know, put themselves too far out. And we're just grateful that the Wasson Fund chose to donate this gift to the community. We were looking at an app anyway, but getting that charitable donation certainly allowed us to speed up the implementation of a program like this.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Lieutenant Price and Chief Salt.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to apologize. The video that I mentioned is not available at the moment, but it will go up today on our Facebook page. We'll Twitter it out as well and we'll send it to all the council. But it is a mini-documentary, if you will, on the Gun Crime Task Force and some of our engagement in the community.
Super. Thank you.
So Steve Bonds back up to talk about other aspects of our Safe and Clean program, beginning with property management and the whole broken window theory. And then, of course, at some point, after he's covered several items, he will introduce Sanitia White.
Absolutely. So moving on to the property management elements, of course, as I said, one of the inspections of, we have a rental inspection district, which is defined by code, the areas of the city where we do proactive inspections of properties, rental properties. They're to ensure that the dwellings meet safe, decent, and sanitary living conditions. This is a map which indicates the areas that are part of the rental district. The only thing that needs to be included in this map that's not accurate is we had North Phoebus and South Phoebus. As you'll hear, we did an expansion to cover a missing part of Phoebus, so all of Phoebus is included in that, our rental inspection district. Rental inspectors in the district, they conduct, as I said, regular property inspections, city code and zoning violations. And they also inspect when people call into 311 and they do proactive inspections, looking for rental properties, making sure that they're up to our standards. Since our last update in last July, there've been 430 rental inspections conducted. 90 of those were first-time inspections. Of those 90 first-time inspections, 61 violations were found. We've done a total of 340 re-inspections. That's when we have inspections, we found violations. We've gone back to make sure that those have been completed and addressed. 400 of those inspections have been closed, it's completed, and 30 are still pending as we go along. Some of the challenges, and there are challenges that have remained since the beginning of the program, identifying unregistered rental properties. When owners decide to rent their properties, sometimes they do not let us know that. So we do proactive drive-arounds. We try to make sure that we're identifying those. We check listings for properties, we, in those areas, we're proactive in trying to make sure we're identifying those properties. Compliance with inspections, sometimes especially re-inspections are an issue. Once the owner has fixed the problem, a lot of times it becomes a lot harder to get back in to re-inspect because it becomes in some ways an inconvenience for the tenant, or at least the tenant sees it that way now that their problem has been addressed. And there, of course, we have the problem with not being able to issue summons for people who do not live in the city of Hampton or don't live in the state. It becomes hard to serve them with violations. As I said earlier, we have expanded their rental inspection district to include a part of Phoebus that was missed. The, it met the criteria and the criteria is set by the state code. We believe that the rental inspection program has been successful, as I said, of the 90 new first-time inspections, we found 61 violations. So we made a difference for at least those 61 tenants. We've made a difference in the 340 re-inspections that we've done. It doesn't, it's not a perfect system, but we're working to make sure that we're addressing the issues in these areas. We also have the hotel ordinance. It's to ensure that only hotels that have been identified and have the facilities to be extended stay hotels are being utilized in that way. It's to make sure that we give safe and sanitary places for people to live throughout our community. And every motel received the permit the first year. We've had five that have been approved as extended stay. And 100% of the extension applications received in the motels approached 30 days were screened and assessed for homeless services. Since our last update last July, we had 21 extension applications received. 11 of them were approved as homeless. 10 were denied, and there were several reasons for them being denied as being considered homeless. Some of them were working in hotels that were near their employment. They weren't truly homeless. Out-of-town workers who needed a place to stay temporarily that was longer than 30 days. And some of them, we've lost contact with after we received their information. They vacated the premises and we weren't able to follow up with them. We also have a partnership with the city schools that we're very proud of, with their race to graduation staff. We're making sure that all young people who attend our schools have a permanent place to stay, to make sure that they're not faced with a challenge, an additional challenge to come to school ready to learn. And we appreciate the partnership with schools and making sure that that occurs. It's also a part of Safe and Clean, we have neighborhood initiatives. And we believe that neighborhoods are the basic building block of any action for any city. They're where, they're kind of the incubators where real progress and change occurs in our, in our community. The goal is to build positive relationships with the neighborhoods, the communities, the organizations between them and the city staff, and to also build capacity for neighborhood leaders inside those neighborhoods. Some of the positives that we've found is there's a desire to work with police and city officials. There's a desire to learn new skills. And there's a desire in almost every community to focus on children and families. It's things that we can all agree upon. Some of the challenges that we had is that some of the neighborhoods in our, in the Safe and Clean are in transition. Some of them are transitioning to older people in the community who have been leaders and have kind of, they feel like they've served their time and we need to find new leadership. Some of them are changing from owner-occupied to more rental. That presents a challenge. There's limited structures for communication. There are a number of different challenges that we've observed in these communities. Our efforts to address the challenges are to make sure that we're building the capacity and doing some succession planning and finding new leaders in the community, and also increasing opportunities for social, social interaction among families who are living in the community so they can become more tight-knit and understand the assets that are there and available in their own communities. The way that we build capacity is through coaching, and that can be formal and informal, establishing those communication structures among the neighborhoods themselves and with city officials. We're training neighborhoods to reactivate neighborhood watches and in some cases establish them, to build a closer bond and to make sure that neighbors are watching out for neighbors. And we're registering neighborhoods and neighborhood organizations with the neighborhood office. And the benefit is that, is there benefits in some of our special events that are neighborhood-focused, requires less paperwork and less effort to make sure that we have neighborhood structured focused events for those social, excuse me, social engagements between neighbors to build a stronger community. Increased social interactions. We have the Housing Blitz. Our next Housing Blitz area will be Old North Hampton. We have new special event rules, which I, which I talked about a little bit earlier. Community explosions, these are partnerships between the city and the faith-based community and community organizations, different areas in the city to make sure that neighborhoods are out, they learn of the resources that are available in the community, is a chance to interact, to have fun, and to learn what is available in their own community. We have had the North Phoebus Community Day of Service, which we came and presented to council about, where they went and worked at North Phoebus Community Center. And we also have the Asset-Based Community Development Pilots, which are both in Phoebus and in the Shell Road corridor. So what are some of the results? We've had reinvestment. We've seen a trend since 2013 of increased reinvestment in these areas. From August of last year till June of this year, there was almost $7.5 million, it's $7,464,000 with a reinvestment in these areas. It showed, we think that's a promising sign. It shows that citizens are believing in our communities, that we're making a difference, and that people are willing to improve our communities. As we look at, yes?
Steve, before you go on.
Yes.
Go back to the, yeah, to that slide. How do you, how do you make that determination? What are you measuring there to get these dollar numbers?
It's the permits that come in to our community development, the price of the, well, the estimated improvements in the community and what, what the applications say in the permits for the investment is how we track that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next steps, we're incorporating, as I mentioned, the Asset-Based Community Development Model. We have pilot programs. It says in North Phoebus, but it should just say Phoebus and Shell Road. North Phoebus was the first meeting place, but it is for all of Phoebus. And partnerships with community, faith-based, civic, and government entities. When we look at the Asset-Based Community Development in Shell Road, the first step was we identified community connectors, which are concerned citizens and citizen leaders. We organized meetings that were open to the public and to anybody who lived in that community. We had them identify the areas that they felt were areas of concern in their communities. They organized into, organized community action teams around those issues. And those CAT teams have begun to meet to talk about what the issues are, what are possible solutions, how they can solve some of those issues, and how they will partner with the city in order to address those issues. And that was for the Phoebus partnership. And the Asset-Based Community Development at Shell Road, and it's important to note that each, each community is slightly different. And as we break these out into different communities, they'll organize a little differently. They also needed community connectors, which they're identifying now. They're in partnership with the neighborhood commissioners. They survey residents about the concerns and the assets. They're conducting home, host-home meetings, which means that they're meeting inside actual neighbors' homes to talk about these issues, whereas in the Phoebus, they decided to have a bigger community meeting. And they're helping to develop relationships and discussions early on in the process to try to make them a stronger community as they move forward to tackle these issues. Some of the challenges that we've observed already, it's a complete paradigm shift, which is difficult for not only the neighborhood and neighbors and community participant, it's also different, difficult for staff. It's a new way of thinking about these issues. And so as we wrestle with our roles, we learn and as we're learning, we implement those lessons learned into the new policy that we'll roll out. It's going to be some of staff giving up a little bit of control and direction of what we think the issues might be or what we may think the problems are. And it's going to be the neighborhood taking a little bit more ownership or responsibility for some of the concerns and addressing those concerns. Although we know that there are challenges and we know that this can be kind of a, it's going to take some time and some patience for progress, we do believe that this is the best way to build lasting and sustainable change. And so we're committed to this process. Finally, before I ask Sanitia to come up, yes, I'm sorry.
What's the participation been like in those neighborhoods?
It's been different. We had, with the community connectors meeting for Phoebus, I happened to go out to that meeting. There's probably, I'd say roughly about 35 residents who came out. And they divided themselves into two groups with the CAT teams to work on those issues. I can say that the group that was working on public safety has been a little bit more active thus far in their meetings than the other group. But it's a learning process. It's, it's a learning process. And part of, I guess, what we have to do with staff, and one of the challenges with staff, is there are things that government has to do, that we will do, that there are services that we provide regardless. But we also have to be willing to stand back and allow residents to come up with what they think the problems are, what they think their solutions are, and how they wish for us to help them and assist them in those solutions. And I think most of us who get into public service, we kind of want to rush in and fix things. I think that's the expectation that we've always kind of operated under. And this is a different paradigm than that. And so it's, like I said, there's been some growing pains on both sides and some challenges on both sides. But I think the community, as well as the members of the Safe and Clean team that are involved in this, are getting a better understanding of what our roles are in the process at this point.
Mr. Bond?
Yes, sir.
I just want to echo, if you would echo again on the, both the rental inspection and the hotel inspection, that we recognize and realize that these are not perfect programs, that they're evolving, but they are deterrents.
Yes, sir.
That people do know that someone is watching to ensure that people are in safe homes, that we have, you know, good conditions in our hotels as well. So I just wanted to circle back around so you could have the opportunity to echo that.
Yes, sir. We have conducted, as the stats showed, over 700 inspections. We have not inspected every property, but we've been in every area and we have been making sure that we're active in every area. As soon as we identify properties, we get in contact with the owners and we inspect those and make sure that they're up to compliance. And we do hope that it serves as a reminder to landlord, excuse me, the landlords that maybe they should listen to their better selves and make sure that they keep their property up to our standards. Because if not, there is a day that we will come knocking on their door and then we will inspect the property and hold them to account. And so as we know, we can't hit every single property every year. It is, we do hope that it's a deterrent and a reminder that we do have standards in our communities. We expect people to live up to them and that we all have an obligation, if we are property owners, to make sure that we're abiding by the law. And there's someone there to watch.
Mayor? Mr. Bond, we received an email recently, but from someone who lived in Aberdeen, and they were pointing out how many more rentals they have in the neighborhood than they used to have. And this is very true of since the recession and people started buying up properties and rather than flipping them, they found it more profitable to hold on and rent them. But the question is, how long, you know, we've got these rental districts and it appears that we need one in this particular neighborhood, but we don't have it. How long do we intend on keeping a neighborhood into rental district before we move on to another neighborhood?
We are, we have a program called Socratica, where we're trying to gather information so we can track information. We have not set yet what is the threshold for when you move in and when you move out. That is a discussion that we're having. We're having it with community development and with the other partners who are part of the Safe and Clean Initiative. We do plan on establishing a criteria for when people move in and move out. And if, if there are areas that want to be added to the rental district, if they fall under the necessary requirements of the code, then we look to possibly expand. That's exactly what happened with that area of Phoebus that we expanded between last year and this year. But we do, we do realize that we do need to have a threshold for when you move in and when you would move out. The problem and some of the concern, quite honestly with that, is most of my career has been spent dealing with law enforcement as a prosecutor or otherwise. And what I've found is once you let up focus in one particular area, when you think that you've kind of addressed the problem, if you move to another area, that crime tends to shift. And we want to make sure that if we move out of the rental inspection district, that we're still watching it so that it doesn't fall back into an area of disrepair.
I imagine this to be true. But also, I mean, you only have a limited number of resources. You know, I mean, if we had resources bounding, then we could continue to add.
Correct.
So I think that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Steve, my question relates to the rental inspection program too. And as Councilmember Schmidt, you just explained to her that once a neighborhood comes off of the rental inspection program, you continue to monitor for a while. Would that be the case for Fox Hill Mutual Homes, which is now Buckrow Point Apartments? I think it's been sold and they renovated into nice apartments with market rate rent. So my assumption is that will be one that would drop off.
To be quite honest, that was one of the ones who sparked our first conversations about when do we move someone out and what are those thresholds that we need. I would imagine that once we set that threshold, that they would be one of the first to move out. But as I said, we certainly want to make sure that the owners of those properties are aware that even if you're not in the rental inspection district, that we'll, code enforcement will still be monitoring those neighborhoods and trying to make sure that everyone is still meeting the standards. We don't, we want, we want to put our resources where they can be most effective, but we also want to make sure that everyone is still meeting the same standards that we expect throughout the city.
Okay. And a couple of other questions. And you, you know, if you don't have the answer for these now, you can just let me know later. But you, one of your slides, you indicated that you've completed 430 inspections. And so I guess that's since the inception of the program?
No, sir.
Or is that just one year?
That's one year.
That's one year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and do we have a full complement of...
And, and do we have a, a full complement of our team of rental inspection staff? Or are there vacancies or, you know, do you, do you know where we are with that?
Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you whether or not there are vacancies right now.
Okay.
Rental inspection staff, but I will give that.
All right, thank you.
Before we, before I ask Ms. White to come up to talk to you about her update, we're proposing a name change to what was formerly the Office of Youth Violence Prevention. We're asking that we change the name to the Office of Youth Opportunities. There are a number of reasons for that. First of all, we think the new name will more accurately reflect the daily operations of what that office does. For some youth violence prevention, when you say youth violence prevention, some people hear youth violence and they never actually hear the prevention part. And that has become kind of an obstacle in dealing with some of our external partners and communities that we try to partner with. And also, there's some belief in some of the communities that it may inappropriately stereotype kids. All the kids that we have in, that are, we're looking to provide with additional opportunities aren't violent or haven't proven to be violent. What we're simply trying to do is make sure that they don't make a wrong turn somewhere. And many kids are at risk of doing that. We, we want to make sure that we're not creating any artificial obstacles. There are some kids and some parents who would not want to be associated with a program called Youth Violence Prevention because they believe that if you do that, it's, there's a stereotype that your kid is violent, when they're not. And for all those reasons, we think that it, it makes sense to more accurately reflect the work of the office and to help build better partnerships to have that name change. Are there any questions about any of my press? Yes.
Do we need to vote on that name change or that's done?
I, I'm, I'm fine with the name change, but I, I asked this question of you the other day, when you speak of youth, what age range are you talking about? And so, you're, you can give me the answer and then I'll go.
We generally use the CDC definition of 14 to 24 as youth.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and, and my concern was that most people don't think of a 24-year-old as a youth or 20-year-old as a youth. And so, I'm, I'm kind of concerned that by just saying youth prevention or youth this, that we really then miss or the opportunities to support those older individuals who we consider to be youth too. And I don't have the answer, but I just, you know, wanted to just raise the level of consciousness about that.
I think that's a valid concern and I'm sure we can discuss it and maybe even the Office of Youth and Young Adult Opportunities or something of that nature, I may address that concern.
Well, I was going to ask a question. Was that age group above, say 19 or so or 18, was that our focus from the beginning or we just kind of figured, kind of like transitioned that when we got involved with the Cities United?
I was not, I guess, around for the inception of the office and I'm not exactly sure what the thought process was at the founding of the office. But I do believe that the stats, the statistics that we have and the data that we have would show that young adults also need opportunities and are part of the problem that we're trying to address. So, even if that was not originally contemplated, I think it makes sense at this point to have that as part of the focus of the office. And this office, when we talk about youth opportunities or youth and young adult opportunities, we really are talking about opportunities for all youth in our community. I mean, we have a specific focus, which is data-driven on certain segments of the youth, but we want to make sure that we're not leaving any of the youth in our community behind. So, it is a, it's a broad name, but it's for a broad mission.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Anybody else?
I was just going to say in answer to your question about do we need a vote for the name change, we generally don't vote at afternoon session, as you know. And because it's an office as opposed to a department, I don't think we actually need it. But my plan had been to put it on consent agenda for you in August, just so that everyone's clear about that, assuming that you all have a comfort level.
And that's the only reason why I asked about the vote, was the idea of, as a body, we approve of that.
Right.
So much that we vote this afternoon.
Correct, okay.
Is it something that we need to give our approval to or is it just a city manager initiative that you can?
I would certainly prefer to have your support. And if you're not comfortable, if you want us to go back and try to come up with a name that better reflects young adults or something like that, we can play with it. It is an office in the city manager's office, but we try to do everything in partnership with council, so we very much want your feedback.
Right. It seems, I mean, what's, is there comfort with it or we feel like we need to work with again?
I'm on. I, I'm comfortable with the, with the name, but I, I would just like just to give a little bit more thought to what Councilmember Snead indicated. Because youth, you have a certain image in your mind of what a youth is, but we're also talking about young adults. And if in fact, the mission of the office is going to be able to include young adults, if, if possible, you know, certainly that's under the direction of the manager, but if possible, I would certainly like to see if we could include young adults some sort of way.
I'm thinking that's probably it right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
In that case, I'd ask Ms. White to come up and join us.
Good afternoon, council, city manager, city attorney. Today, I'm going to give you an update on what's been going on in our office since last year's presentation in August. Starting with the summer youth employment program, we have an update for this slide. We currently have, we still have our 80 vacancies that we aim to fill at the beginning of recruitment for the program. And we have recruited 110 students to date, completing our last and final new hire orientation this past Friday and a day of pre-employment training on yesterday. And we currently have 75 students who are active in the program. This year, our outreach was a little bit different. We did a good amount of walking and along with emailing businesses to see if they were interested because it, quite honestly, when you, sometimes as the manager said, when you hear the name of our office, you may not want to partner with us. Because initially, you think that the young person that I'm trying to place in your business may bring me a little more trouble than would be worth it. And so, this year, we just hit the pavement and walked around the businesses, talked to them, introduced ourselves and handed out interest forms that they can complete. Then we'd call back or send an email or visit them again. And this year, we were able to reach out to over 25 businesses all across the city of Hampton and were able to recruit, this list has 10, but since the presentation was completed, we've added two additional business, businesses. One is a clothing store in the Phoebus area and the other is an HVAC company that heard about the program and wanted to see if they could partner with us to potentially place a young person, if that young person had that interest. There were also some businesses that we, external businesses that we recruited, but they were not able to provide the documentation, documentation to the city attorney's office that needed to be in place for us to enter into an agreement to partner, to place students there. And we wanted to make sure that the safety of our students and the businesses that we were working with were very clear of our expectations and the standards for participating in the program. Internally, we have six departments that are working with us this year. We are at all of the public libraries and we are at just about every parks and recreation, parks, recreation and leisure services facility and park across the city. We have continued our partnership with Cities United. This past year, we hosted the second regional convening. We were supported with 83 individual volunteers who helped us with planning, implementation, and then a follow-up meeting. We had 300 participants during the day and representation from Williamsburg, Smithfield, Richmond, Portsmouth, York County and Newport News for the day session. Also, 100 young people were sponsored to attend. Transportation was covered by the Peninsula Baptist Association in partnership with Hampton City Schools and 100 students were sponsored by Freedom Life Church in Hampton. In the evening, we had 250 people attend the evening session and the conversation led by the faith community and 73 Resource Fair participants. This year, we have been asked again to attend the national convening in Minneapolis, Minnesota. We just received some information yesterday from Anthony Smith, the director of Cities United. The agenda or the convening goals this year for the national convening is to, are to provide coaching and capacity building that's tailored to meet the needs of our city and our goals, highlighting replicable strategies and initiatives that mayors or city leads may need more in-depth information about and connecting them with counterparts in the country who have already begun to do some of the work so they can ask some, some tough questions and potentially get feedback about how, about the progress they've made or things that they've had to overcome in doing the work. This year, they're also adding a young adult lead. And so, they are bringing in young adults today early to bring them together from around the country to give some honest feedback and dialogue about what partnering cities are doing and opportunities that we could possibly capitalize on to bring more young people into the fold and planning to prevent violent-related deaths of black males across the country. Oops, sorry. In April of this past year, Chanel Lewis, our, from our office, attended a city lead planning lab to work on developing a roadmap and get one-on-one training in Kentucky. Cities United was able to take care of all of her lodging, provide training materials and then set up an online system where she can go in and still communicate and share information with other city leads across the country. And as we've stated before, in 2019, Hampton will be hosting the national convening for Cities United. And, and looking at the original dates, we went back after speaking with the city manager and the assistant city manager and requested that Anthony Smith work with us to align the dates for the national convening with the 2019 Commemorative Commission dates for that weekend. Also, because they have connections at the federal level and with the My Brother Keeper, My Brothers Keeper Alliance to support efforts of bringing current or former heads of the executive body to the city of Hampton that weekend. We've also talked to them about bringing other organizations to the fold. They often partner with Campaign for Black Male Achievement. And so, if there's the possibility to bring in other national organizations, then we can extend all of the events and activities for the week. And we can also utilize that opportunity to make sure that we are getting information from those who are leading this work across the country and not just Cities United. Last year, we talked about establishing committees to look at some concerns related to school violence, workforce, the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and also bringing organizations together that benefit citizens. When we began to look at citizen membership, we found out that some committees existed. And then we also ended up being invited to others after we reached out and shared our concerns about some of the things that we wanted to address together. So, the office has always been a part of Safe and Clean and particularly now the Asset-Based Community Development Initiatives in North Phoebus and Shell Road, the JDAI Collaborative that meets that is led by Ellen Madison. I was asked to serve on the Hampton City Schools Climate and Culture Task Force where we talk about school violence, we talk about how young people and staff need to feel when they walk into a school and feel safe and be able to report information. Yes, sir?
I can figure out the other acronyms or abbreviations. I'm not sure about JDAI.
Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative?
Okay, that works. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hampton School Stakeholders, that group's convened by Judge Duggar because he realized that a lot of us have similar concerns, but we need some, an opportunity to get together on a monthly basis and look at what we're doing in each of our areas, identify areas of overlap and partnership and determine better ways to work together. And Hampton Workforce Stakeholders Group, led by Pam Croom in Economic Development, where we have been able to get information and build relationships that honestly has been helpful for us, especially after we fill the spaces for the summer employment program. We now have relationships with workforce development so that we can give parents good information and students as well to connect them to an organization that does employment training or connecting them directly to goodwill if they're looking for assistance to develop their resume or look at a, a hiring list that actually is current and active. A lot of times, if you tell a young person to, you can go to McDonald's and look, if their interest is not McDonald's, they're not going to look into that. And so, it's helpful to give them a resource where they can go and someone will speak to them, find out their interests, their abilities and see if there are other service gaps in place. Another concern was encouraging collaboration. When we do the Urgency of Now, we have the Resource Fair that has been incredibly successful for the past two years. But in speaking with those who presented, they wanted an opportunity after February or the March timeframe to connect with people. And their desire was not necessarily to join a committee, they wanted to get to work. Timing worked on our side and we've been able to reach out to all of those organizations and ask them to partner with us on the community explosions. And so, we've had really good turnout and really good response to vendors who want to participate. And the majority of those vendors were vendors at the Urgency of Now. Again, partnering our public safety partnerships, Camp Prospect with the Hampton Fire Division. This year, there has been a change. We've increased the number through partnership of students who can participate to 20. And we've also given parents the option to drop their young person off on Sunday and pick them up on Saturday, or they can drop them off every morning at 6:00 and pick them up at dinner every day. And with the Hampton Police Division, the Virginia Rules Camp, this year, we made a change after looking at the students who came out last year and some of their feedback and decided to focus on rising sixth through ninth graders. Last year, they were more receptive to the information and to the partnership. And we have also this year identified a percentage of the slots that we're working directly with the Housing Authority and with Human Services to identify young people who would really benefit from having this opportunity this summer. And the community explosions, this, we were asked to partner on this one along with the Police Department with the Virginia Attorney General's Office. We have faith-based organizations to have six events all over the city of Hampton. To date, we've had 31 vendors register to support and come out and share information. All of the events, except for the first one, AmeriCorps volunteers have come out to help serve the community, help with parking, help set up tables and just really help us get out there so that we can focus on creating an environment where citizens who may not normally come out don't have to look for someone to show them where to go or answer a question. The events are, are all different intentionally because different neighborhoods have different concerns and different desires, but with the goal of showing that we can all come together and share information. And that there's resources available in Hampton. The BotFen Life Skills Program, this will be our second year implementing that. We received a state grant to cover the expense of the materials and we're currently at 12 sites. The Life Skills Program has been proven and is recognized by the Substance Abuse Health Administration, SAMSA, to reduce alcohol, tobacco and other drug use, including opioid addiction or, to prevent the use of opioid as, as well. Violence and antisocial behaviors by promoting community, or communication and conflict resolution. Last year, we had 297 students complete the program at 12 total sites. This year, what we've done to support the longevity of the program is partnered even closer with the School Age Programs and Jason Samuels to bring in all of the student leader, or all of the program leaders at each of his after-school locations and have them trained so that they can implement the program across the board, reach more young people. And then if it proves to be successful for them, then moving forward, it's only a cost of materials if they want to continue to do this with their young people. And they can implement this program at their middle school sites and their elementary school sites. We will continue to partner with the campus at LE to do it with the students in the high school setting. And so, as I've discussed, the 2017 Urgency of Now Regional Convening and our participation in the inaugural planning lab, we will begin working on a roadmap and developing that for the city of Hampton. And we expect to receive additional support at the national convening this year. FY18 initiatives. FY18 Initiatives. Several different things that we have begun to research and implement or we will be beginning to do more research to implement this year. The mentoring initiative, Reset, which is a partnership with the Hampton Police Division and the Victim Services Department in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Developing the roadmap, a re-imaging campaign and the Summer Youth Employment Program Pipeline, Hampton Hoops and the Online Resource Guide. And I'm going to talk about each of these individually, but I wanted to share that we do have some desired outcomes. So we'd like to increase the number of unduplicated youth who are participating in these programs. Prevention programs are helpful. Results are not immediate. And so we have to find a way to follow the young people and see their successes or some of their trials, find out if they have court involvement, things of that nature. With Life Skills, we're able to do a pre- and post-test that comes with the curriculum. But long-term, we're going to be, we're going to have to work in partnership with the Police Department and other in-court services to look at violence reduction indicators. So comparing crimes that are reported to law enforcement in targeted communities and comparing that to what's going on in communities that are not targeted to see if we're making a difference. As the chief discussed, I've had conversations with him as well about some type of interagency program because a lot of times, we find young people that we're able to refer to programs that we fund through the Mini-grant program or programs that our office is partnering with because a parent calls about something and they may have a young person who is court-involved on house arrest or in a little bit of trouble. And we can ask then if there's other young people in the household, share with them what we're doing so we can engage those young people before they follow the behaviors of siblings or other people in the home. The mentoring initiative that we'd like to start this year is going to be blackmail-focused based on the data that we've received from the Police Department and also some of the data that we received from the school system. We'd like to partner with Big Brothers and Big Sisters because that is their business. They're a professional mentoring organization. And they have all of the standards in place so that we can follow those, they can track them. The pilot program will initially consist of 20 to 25 employees and in speaking or getting feedback from Human Resources. In the initial year, we feel it's best to target supervisors so that as we expand this program and roll it out, they have a better understanding of what their employees will be volunteering to do. And also the process, get feedback to say, did it take more time away? Is it something worthwhile? And also just help us to build a better program. It will be a one-hour-per-week commitment. Anyone who does sign up to participate will have to agree to that one-hour a week through the school year. It will be school-based mentoring, and they'll have to pass the background checks and complete training provided by Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Our Community-Based Trauma Response, Reset, Rapid Engagement of Support in the Event of Trauma. Earlier, my apologies, I left out 311. But 311 Hampton Police Division and Youth Opportunities and Victim Witness Services. So the way we'd like to roll this out is there is a homicide in a community. And we have, we hope to have a large body of volunteers who have gone through Reset training. There's a homicide. A call will go out from 311 to those who are trained, and they can call back in to volunteer. Once we get to about 20 volunteers, we will go into the community and give them information about positive resources in the city of Hampton. It could also be information about mental health counseling. This is a restorative effort. It's not investigative in nature at all. We are being very careful to make sure that we're not putting anyone in danger and also that we are not interfering with any active investigations.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there a sense that the only kids or children who are traumatized are ones who witnessed a homicide or maybe just a shooting?
There are studies to show that kids, there are kids, children who suffer and adults who suffer from PTSD just from hearing a lot of gunshots.
Right.
I would be interested in that research because one of the things that by observation, and I think we have bridged that gap. We have our Downtown Child Development Center in proximity to our shooting range. And oftentimes, you have young, you would have young kids out on the playground while there was active shooting. Once we brought that, and I believe that that is still in effect, the chief can tell me, there is now a coordinated effort so that when there's shooting, the kids are not outside. Because that was a concern of mine. Having a granddaughter that was in that program, what are the effects of young people being exposed to gunfire? Not necessarily hostile gunfire, but gunfire, period. So what you're telling me, that there is research that speaks to that? Okay.
Because you don't feel safe in your home?
I would, I would, I would like, I would like to, to see that research. And I also would like to, at some point, follow up with the chief to see if we still have a coordinated effort so that the children are not out on the playground at the same time they're shooting on the, at the shooting range as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. In developing the roadmap, we've had discussions with the city manager and the mayor about reconvening Hampton United, but doing a little bit of restructuring so that we have clear levels that focus on policy, program, implementation, and evaluation, but also making sure we have a youth advisory and a citizen review component for two reasons. A lot of the work that we're doing, or all of the work that we're doing, we want it to impact young people and keep them from getting involved in negative activities. And if we don't have them at the table, then we're just, we have all of the best intentions to do the work, but we really need to hear from the young people who we're affecting. And the other piece is hearing from citizens to determine whether or not they think we're moving in the right directions, any assets they have that they can bring to the table, and informing them along the process so that they are not waiting for an update that's posted yearly or quarterly or they have to worry about calling our office. We want to share this information and be very transparent in the development of the roadmap. And quite frankly, when you develop roadmaps or strategic plans or anything, if citizens aren't involved from the beginning, you're dead in the water. Because as we all know, the work that we do only goes so far. We rely heavily on citizen support and volunteers. The next piece is a re-imaging campaign. We've looked at the work that the Campaign for Black Male Achievement is doing, and while the data is the data for the folks that we're most concerned about that are victims or committing crime, we also have a great deal of black men in the city of Hampton who are excellent fathers. They're volunteering, they're supporting this community, and they are positive. And so we need to take some time to lift those examples up as well. It may inspire someone else that will encourage them. And just like when you see, you open up the paper, you go online, and you see the face of a black male who has been arrested or is a suspect, it is very rare that you see the face of a black male who is making a difference in his community. And so we need to shift the narrative on that. We will not ignore the reason that we're doing the work, but we will make sure to lift up a lot of the black men who are doing great things in the city of Hampton. We also discussed creating a pipeline. After this year, we are going to ask the external businesses to work with us for a little bit to let us know if the week-long training, if they saw the effects of the week-long training we do with the young people before we place them at the employment site. So in that week-long training, and for those who receive the abbreviated training because we're trying to fill as many vacancies as possible when students drop off, are they learning that if they're not going to work? Did you have a student who walked off? Did you have a student who was able to handle conflict resolution in the work site well? Do you have a student who, his team has different generations on it? Was he respectful and mindful, or he or she respectful and mindful of their coworkers? And, you know, just quite honestly, yes or no? And what else could we do after you've reviewed our full training? What are we missing? What are some things that you're missing that we need to better prepare our students for? Ultimately, getting to a point so that next year, along this process of reviewing it, of course, we're going to ask them to continue to partner with us to host students, but we want to get to a point where we say, well, if the majority of the young person's bi-weekly evaluations are within a certain range, when the program ends, if you have a vacancy and they can show you their certificate, would you give them an opportunity to interview? Now, we realize this may be best for some of the young people who are still in high school, but for those who are graduating, now that we have a business like an HVAC company and making sure they're aware and getting connected with economic development for trade opportunities, would you work with this young person to keep them there because they need to make more money, to take care of themselves, and to continue to be an asset to our city? So they'll review the training components, our participant evaluation, and if we can find a better transition process for the young people who've participated in the program over the summer. Hampton Hoops. Actually, the game started on Monday night, but it's a seven-week program. And we initially talked about having an evening basketball league and doing it on the weekends. But Lieutenant Price provided us with information from last summer that showed Monday through Thursday evenings, we had the highest rates of negative contact with juveniles in the city of Hampton. And so what we've done is developed three age groups, adults 15 to 17 and 11 to 14. They play twice a week at Fort Monroe, West Hampton, and YH Thomas Community Center. And it's basketball. Monday night, it was very, very competitive. We had a little over 100 people in the audience who were just pure spectators who were coming out. And so if you have 80 people participating in the adult division plus 100 spectators, then you have a good amount of people who are out engaged in something positive on two nights a week. Tonight, our adults are back at West Hampton. Last year, last night, 11 to 14 started at, I'm sorry, they're at Fort Monroe. 11 to 14 started at West Hampton last night, and they'll play again tomorrow. It's heavily volunteer-supported. We were able to reach out to Bob Thomas at 95.7 R&B because some of our registration was a little slow for volunteers and for 11 to 14. And he put it out as a PSA, and our volunteer support went up. We got calls for folks who, of course, wanted to coach and those who wanted to be a head coach. We got a call from retired mother in the Shell Road area who said she had no, she had no interest in doing anything with basketball anymore because her daughter played and coached forever. But she did say that we could call her to help wash uniforms. And so we're going to take her up on that because we've supplied the uniforms. We're going to need help getting that done. Other people have said, you know, can I show up and bring water? Absolutely. So we have allowed folks who called us to say they want to volunteer, give us the guidance on how they want to volunteer. And we're trying our best to utilize every interested person to, excuse me, to support the program. We're also encouraging the teams to look at community service projects or other activities that they want to do together so that the relationships they develop go beyond the program. And we're asking community organizations that we partner with to share information. And so so far, we've received information from the Unity Commission about their Youth Advisory Board. We have shared all of their information with those young people, and that's internal. But a really good one was the Trio Program at Hampton University. It's only focusing on students in the city of Hampton this year. And so Educational Talent Search. I was an Educational Talent Search kid, and because of the income of my household, my grandmother did not have to pay for any SATs. She also did not have to pay for any college application expenses. And so in a household with one person working full-time with four kids, the 25 and 50 or however much it was back then adds up. And so it was very helpful. And so in the registration nights, we were able to hand those envelopes and that information directly to parents because the director of the Trio Program said that she sends information home, but she's not sure if it gets to mom or dad or the guardian. She appreciated us being able to put it in the hands of those parents. Now, our 15 to 17-year-old league, we did not fill that league up, but we did not want to leave them in the lurch. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, you have organized open gym. You have volunteer coaches. They're still getting their jerseys. They're running all night. And we have encouraged them to bring friends with them to play. On paper, we had eight kids who were registered to participate. Last night, those eight kids bought 16 friends. We ended up with 24 kids. So last night, we've asked all of those young people tomorrow night to bring more friends so that we can fill the gym up and still give them the same resources and opportunities. The Online Resource Guide. We, I shared this with you last year, and we are in the testing phase now of that. It is still, it is still web-based, searchable. It's going to be able to map information so you can put in your zip code and find the services that are closest to you. And the information is concise, but information that we think is helpful. So if you are, if you enter treatment, you'll be able to find, to narrow that down to determine if you're looking for mental health, if you are looking for substance abuse treatment. And when you go on an organization, you'll find out if they take insurance, are there sliding scales? Is it free for certain segments of the population? Or if a referral is required? Because a lot of times, you give information to someone, they call, you're in dire need, you're concerned about someone, and they say, sorry, you have to call this number first, who will then send you back to us. And someone who really needs help doesn't need any additional barriers. Two things. Friday, because of the support that we have from folks who quite, who, a lot of them I've never met on social media. Someone was Googling things, positive things for young people in Hampton Road. So Friday, we'll be doing a brief call-in section on Norfolk State University's radio station because they Googled it and they found Hampton Hoops. And so they're going to continue to share that information for us. And they've invited us back to have a whole entire two-hour segment on July 28th where they get to talk to us about what we're doing. And it's a pure call-in show. So we'll have a lot of fun, but we'll make sure we share a lot of really good information. And then on Friday, myself, Jason Price, and others, or Lieutenant Price and others, are presenting at the National Police Caplains Meeting or Conference in Norfolk, talking about some of the efforts that have come out of our participation in the monthly dialogue on racism, poverty, and violence and how we've been able to receive information, often unfiltered, sometimes very helpful, or always helpful. Sometimes folks are angry and they're confused, but it's helped us to have a better understanding of what people are feeling from different places and also allowed us to build some better relationships with faith-based community of different backgrounds and find ways that they can partner with our office and that we can also support the work that they're doing. Questions? Yes, sir.
Ma, you know I'm ADD. Let me see, I've got about three questions that I need to ask. One of them that stuck out in my mind was the, the school-based mentoring.
Yes, sir.
For black males. I understand where you're going with. There are some special focuses and emphasis that young black males need attention, but how do you present that? Because if I'm a Hispanic mother and a Caucasian mother or an Asian mother, I need some help for my child, and there's a program there. How are we communicating that? We're not, we don't want to project that we're being exclusive. So how are we presenting that?
We're going to be honest. We're going to go on the data. It is a pilot year. Hampton City Schools is also working with us, and they have shared with us the schools who have the highest number of behavior infractions. Some of those schools have base workers in them already. And so we will, I can't say because it's blackmail-focused that we will change our target target, because our target is our target, but we will absolutely work with those families to find other positive resources for them. And as we expand the program, that may be something that we hear, like, this was great, but, you know, I mean, quite honestly, my children are Korean as well. And so, I could be a parent who says, "Look, Jace is biracial, does he count?" Or Jace can have a friend who's Caucasian who has similar concerns, does he count? Yes, he does, and yes, he matters. But this year in this program, we have a specific target. With your feedback, we're going to work to make sure that we provide resources as well. There are also up and touring initiatives that are inclusive of everyone.
Well, and certainly, again, and I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think it's careful, we'd be careful that we don't appear as though we're doing some reverse discrimination here. We want to be able to make sure that all kids feel included, even though that there's, we know that there's an emphasis for those young African-American boys, and, you know, and we're being intentional and deliberate, but we got to make sure that, in my opinion only, and I'm just one member of council, and I'm one individual in this community, but I think it's important that all our young people feel included. Secondly...
Can I add one thing that I just thought of? What I will do is I will also reach out because we looked at this from what other localities across the country are doing, and we'll find out if we've encountered any of those concerns, how they've addressed it, so that we have some additional information going in so that we make a better informed decision and so that we don't promote anything that does look like reverse discrimination.
And if I might also add, in case it wasn't particularly clear, and first off, let me stipulate, I totally agree with you. What Sanithia was describing is a work-based mentoring program initiative that we're going to do with our employees, not a citywide mentoring program.
I heard school-based.
Right. Our, last year, you, council, asked us to develop a mentoring program for our employees to be able to give back. And I asked Sanithia and Steve to investigate. They made the recommendation that we partner with Big Brothers, Big Sisters because they are a mentoring-based program. They're doing all kinds of other mentoring, a lot of it school-based. What Big Brothers, Big Sisters has recommended, excuse me, to us is that we start with a pilot. Our pilot of 20 to 25 that was referenced, there would be our city employees. And where do we want to direct our city's employees' attention in the first year as we work through the kinks? So, that one hour per week commitment would be time that we would give our employees that are selected to participate away from work to do school-based mentoring. Because, of course, for many of our employees, their work schedule is going to overlap with the school requirement. So, we're making a commitment to allow our workforce, if they go through the pilot screening. And the reason why we do pilot screening is we want them to make sure they're understanding that they're committing for the long haul. We know that many young people who need mentors have been abandoned in some form in their life, either physically or mentally or both, and they're seeking a stable influence. So, we want mentors to be someone who's willing to commit for the long haul, not just for a few weeks, but for the whole year and hopefully for multiple years, and be a positive influence in the child's life. So, we're going to start with that pilot. We were making the conscious choices as an employer to make sure we could measure demonstrable impact, to work with an agency that already does it, and to look at where the data suggests we start, not where we finish, but where we start. And that's sort of why the pilot is described that way. But I could see, as you were asking the questions and Sanithia was responding, that it was possible that people who were watching the program might think that it was the only mentoring program that was going to be offered. There are other mentoring programs for women, for, you know, Latinos, for Asians. This is just where we're choosing to try to start an employer-based mentoring program.
Very good.
Does that help?
Yeah, it's helpful because we need to make sure in our communications that we don't have unintended consequences.
Thank you.
So, I'm there. My second question was regarding data. Since we're all data-driven, where do you get your data?
I get information from, I work very closely with community relations with HPD, and so we meet quite regularly, and I get that information. And I also get information in our public safety business team meetings.
Okay. And how about from our school division and social services? Are you privy to that data?
Because I'm on committees with them, I'm pretty privy to some of the data that they share.
Okay.
So, being on the Climate and Culture Task Force, I was privy to a great deal of information. Being on the stakeholder group and the JDI group, I also get additional information.
Thank you. The last question is regard to, I mean, these issues that we're dealing with are very complex. And, you know, and it's going to take a very strategic and comprehensive planning process and relationship building. This is something that is, it is huge. I just wonder, how are you able to do what you do, including these seven new initiatives, with two, two and a half people?
This year, we have divided the work. Hampton Hoops is being led by Cory Parma, who is our part-time youth violence prevention coordinator. He's being supported by one of our interns who balances his time between summer employment and the Hampton Hoops Initiative. Chanel has taken the lead on some of the, well, on summer youth employment. I am her backup. And then I have taken the lead on the majority of the other initiatives, utilizing the other members of my team and also utilizing some of the folks we sit around the table with, with the committees. We partner a great deal with community relations with HPD and forming a better partnership with victim witness. And as I said with Hampton Hoops, anytime we get a call from someone who wants to get involved, we make sure that we build on that as much as possible. So, we rely heavily on community support and partnership.
Well, I applaud you all for the work that you're doing, and this is a monumental task. And I think in the future, future councils are going to have to look at working, working with the manager and dedicating more assets because this is a problem that exists, and it is not just a government problem. You've got the community, everybody's going to be involved, and it's going to take more assets than two and a half people to do an effective job. And I applaud you all for what you have already accomplished. My last question probably is more for Assistant City Manager Bond in that I heard the conversation of the convening in 2019 in Hampton.
Yes.
And I think that is a huge benefit for the city of Hampton. And because you are a part of the Signature Events Committee with the 2019 Commemorative Committee, where's the bridge? And is there already planning and a budget to be able to ensure not only our national guests that are coming in for the 2019 convening, but also our international guests that are coming in for the 2019 commemorative ceremony that we are adequately represented in Hampton?
Yes, we had a Signature Events Committee meeting yesterday that I attended out in Fort Monroe, and we have come together. I think we've kind of gelled around a plan. We, it took some time to get there, but I'm proud to say that we have made really significant progress with that plan, along with my colleague Assistant City Manager, Laura Fitzpatrick. We're putting together a comprehensive report, which will, and that report will have some budget requests in it. And at that point, which is what the manager has requested from the very beginning, that once we come up with a plan, we talk about, give some budget projections on what that looks like. The manager has committed to trying to find the funds to make sure that we can address those issues. Now, what I've said in those committee meetings and what I reemphasized last night, whatever we plan has to be of the quality, that it's going to attract people to come. We have to make sure that we have something in each of those events that makes me say, with all the commitments that I have with work and with my family and how I choose to spend my time, that it's a must that I attend and I have to be there. And so, we've worked very hard to make sure that we have events that will draw that out and will have people there and ready to go. So, we have a plan. We were saying we'll put some numbers to that. By the end of the summer, we'll have a budget proposal and some ideas. We'll work with the city manager and with the city to see what we can fund and see where those things need to be tweaked. But I have talked about the convening in 2019, and we had that discussion just again yesterday afternoon.
This was a very good presentation, and I want to commend you all on the work that you all are doing. But my concern is, I'm not sure I know what the whole outcome is. What does success look like? And that's from everyone involved with Safe and Clean and, you know, police. I mean, I've worked for the city for 34 years, and we constantly gave police more police officers, and that was always the answer to solving the crime problems. But yet, we still have these same problems. Likewise, we put together a whole Healthy Families unit in the city, and those children started 20 years ago. Now, those children are some, you know, I'm not saying those are the children, but it seems like if those programs were in place, then we should have some better results in the city as far as our youth. And my concern is that I'm not so sure that we've measured what the outcome, what does success look like. And it's wonderful doing all these things, but if these end up not being the right things because we don't know exactly what success looks like and talk about it, and you tell us all the time what your vision of success is, how long will citizens have to wait before they see anything? I mean, do you all discuss those type of things in your meetings? And I'm just being, getting, giving you questions that I get from my constituents regarding this whole issue of violence in the city. And perhaps, you know, I get questions, maybe you're not doing enough on the preventative side, you, you know, certainly do reactive, but maybe we're not as proactive and we don't put enough resources in proactive programs. So, I, you know, I'm just throwing those things out to you for comment.
I think your comments are well-taken. What I would say is, part of what we have to do, and what we're working on doing, is getting some baseline data. I mean, we need, we have to have a place that we start from. Ms. White's presentation, she talked about the development of roadmap. And that roadmap is a comprehensive strategy on how to deal with these things. I'm glad that you mentioned Healthy Families because I was going to mention that as part of the other thing as I wrap this up. With all that we do for youth, those youth exist in families, and those families exist in communities. So, that's why the Office of Youth and Young Adult Opportunities is in partnership with Safe and Clean, which is in partnership with Healthy Family Partnership, which is in partnership with Human Services. There is a communal approach. If you try to address the problems of a young person and you still put them back into an unhealthy environment, I fear what you say. We may just be wasting our time and spending our wills. As you said, it is a complex problem. I'm not here to tell you that there's going to be a magic bullet, and I'm not going to suggest and set an expectation that next year when I come here, I'll have it completely solved and done. What I am going to commit to, and what I think everyone who's involved in Safe and Clean, what Ms. White commits to, is having a baseline, having a roadmap, and working towards solutions, and being willing to evaluate and say, "Hey, maybe this isn't working. We need to abandon that and move to this," being able to be adjustable and flexible.
Okay. And my question is, I don't understand how you can do all of that. Do all of those programs that you've put up there as your goals for fiscal year 18 and develop a roadmap with two and a half people? I mean, it's very, I mean, I just don't know.
Well, the answer in part, if I may, is that we don't do it with two and a half people. We do it with the community. We do it with the collaborative of the various agencies and partnerships. As you know, the Peninsula Community Foundation has really taken a great interest, particularly in poverty, which we believe to be a root cause of a lot of what's going on. It's a strategic initiative that council's adopted. The United Way has embraced pathways out of poverty as its main goal. Sanithia already addressed several of the partnerships, the city departments, the non-city departments. We have facilitators on the team to help facilitate groups to do the roadmap work that is described. One of the conscious choices we made early on with this program and this effort was that we weren't going to stand up a separate whole department for it. And we can revisit that if that's the will of council. But if we stand up a whole department to do youth opportunities or youth violence prevention, however we want to call it, then people expect the city to be the sole solution provider, and we really can't be. It's not that we don't want, it's not that we are not willing to do all that we can. I think the fact that we've been talking about this for two hours and still didn't touch on everything that we do, like parenting programs and Healthy Start and all of those, is indicative that Hampton really does have more prevention programs than probably any city in this region. But we need to have the community engage with us, whether it's helping the police solve crime or it's helping with prevention. And so, our job, Sanithia's job, Steve's job, my job, is to bring all those partners to the table to magnify our work so that rather than having to have a staff of 20, we're calling upon all the resources in the community. And there was something I wanted to close with when we were done about what the community can do because oftentimes, I get questions from citizens who say, "I get it can't be only government, but what can I do?" And I have a list of things that people can individually do to close out our session when you all are ready to do that, whether you want me to do that now or later. But in answer to your question, it's not just two and a half people, and it really shouldn't just be Sanithia's office that is caring about this. It should be our whole city organization, it should be our whole community. And what Sanithia should be doing is helping to bring those groups together to further the work.
That was going to be my point. I didn't get to that part of it, but to me, the roadmap should be the most critical. How can you do almost anything without having a roadmap and knowing what your outcome should be at the end? And, you know, Mary, I know the Healthy Start and Healthy Families is very near and dear to your heart, but along the way somewhere, I think we need to evaluate that program.
Oh, absolutely. That's on the agenda.
Because from my perspective, me being a citizen here, I'm not so sure that we never monitored the children that were in the program. And that's when I start talking about outcomes, to see if in fact, they were successful when they went to school and when they got through school. So, that's the kind of thinking I want us to be thinking about is, how do we really measure success here? And how do we know that success is occurring with the money and resources we're spending on these programs? That we're not just doing it for the sake of doing it.
Right. But the Healthy Families, you all had specifically asked, we do an evaluation this year, and we will be doing that. In the beginning, we did contract with Wayman Mary to do the evaluations. But you are absolutely right, we have not done that in some time, and we really do need to update that.
What I'd like to do is take the question from, we've got two more down that way. All right. I saw Councilman Gray's hand, we'll take his question. Councilwoman Smith. What I'd like to do is end this. I think we've really taken on a whole elephant, and we probably should have taken little bites out of it, but we've taken a whole elephant on. And then I think we want to break for possibly 10 minutes, and then we can regroup and come back and deal with the rest of our agenda. So, Councilman Gray, Councilwoman Smith, and then I think we're going to take a break.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And Sanitha, thank you for a good presentation, and I know you're very busy, a lot going on, and, you know, I know your compassion for the work that you're doing, so that is much appreciated. And you mentioned earlier something that I thought was very true, and that is, you know, prevention alone can't solve the problems because you don't get any immediate outcomes from prevention programs, and so we need some other strategies. The chief mentioned during his presentation that we have identified, you know, a lot of the kids, or we know how to identify a lot of the youth who are involved in some of the gang violence, the shooting incidents, and we need to figure out how to get to some of those youth and redirect them to a better path. So, with that said, I would hope that the mapping process somehow includes intervention strategies that we can use, which gives us the opportunity to get in and do hands-on work with gang members, kids who are on the verge of becoming gang members. Because while we have some good prevention programs, and I'm sure that they may pay off for us one day, you know, we need to get some of these gangsters off the street now. And there are too many violent acts, too many shootings, and, you know, that resonates with the community. And, you know, in the long run, it works against our efforts to, you know, to attract people who want to live here. We need to have a safe community, and I believe we can do that. We have a great police department, great staff working on all that, but we need to be doing some of the right strategies. And it reminded me of a program we had once here a few years ago, back in 2014, I think, Youth Connect, which was a kind of a quasi-prevention intervention program funded through a grant for three years through, I think, the Bureau of Justice Administration. And I just want to throw out a couple of statistics because we talked about measuring outcomes. Youth Connect, which was a program that allowed people to refer youth through 311 to a case manager who worked in Healthy Families, who would work with those families in getting the resources to get kids who were either involved in, you know, the wrong activity or on the verge of doing so. Youth Connect had over 200, 202 referrals in the program over a three-year period. They completed assessments on 188, and 132 of those kids were referred for some services. 108 successfully completed the program, and 54% of those showed, of the students showed a reduction in risk factors associated with criminal activity. And so, you know, that was a program, I know the grant ran out, I think we funded it for one additional year, and now it's gone. But that seemed to be a program that, you know, had some success, and maybe there are... others that are similar to that, that we could also use as a strategy. But I would hope that, one, that it's not going to take us a year to do the roadmap, and then I hope that once we complete the roadmap, that we include some intervention strategies, so that we can redirect some of these kids as quickly as possible and get them off of the street, either through, you know, getting them in case management services, or, you know, through juvenile detention, where we work through, with them through the reentry process, and bring them back to a better path when they return. And I'll just share that I read recently a report, an evaluation of the Los Angeles Office of Gang Prevention and Youth Development, which had done an evaluation on their program, which included a prevention and intervention-type strategies that were having success in redirecting kids. When kids graduated from the program, they did not return to the criminal activity. So, and I'll be happy to send a copy of that. But again, I would, I hope, you know, we will have an opportunity for you to come back and present to us once you have completed your roadmap, because I would agree with Councilman Moffett and Councilwoman Snead, that if we need to put additional resources toward getting results, then I think we have to do that. Because at the end of the day, while I know that government can't solve this solely, or can't be solely government working on solving the problem, I think everything that you're doing to try to coordinate those efforts, coordinate the city resources, as well as the community groups out there that you're working with, and, you know, those who are receiving our youth, I mean, our mini-grants, grassroots mini-grants, you know, that's a community activity, and community involvement, I think, that you are coordinating through your office that could get us some results. So, again, intervention programs, I think, are important, and so we have to move beyond prevention into intervention, and I think that's going to require additional resources. I did want to ask, when is the graduation date for the summer jobs program? Do you already have that?
No, sir, we've not set that date yet, but we will be setting it within the next week.
Okay.
Because we have such a large number of external employers, we want to get some feedback from them, because it's important that a supervisor or representative from the business is able to attend, as well as the council members.
Okay. And then lastly, I know Virginia Rules Camp is coming up, and I had an opportunity to participate in that last year on the day that all the kids went to the fishing period at Buck Row, and we taught kids how to fish. And I've been asked to return, I look forward to doing that, and hopefully maybe some of my fellow council members might want to join us out there for a little fun fishing at Buck Row Pier on the day that we have that. So, thanks again for a good presentation.
And in response to your concerns about Youth Connect, I was on the Youth Connect Advisory Board, so what I will do is go back and look through all of my notes from being an advisory board member, and look at the files that we have in the office now about related costs and partnerships required, so that that will, I'll be able to better inform roadmap development participants.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanitha. You've got a big job, and I don't want to add to your plate, but I had seen a documentary, and it was about the Bloods and the Crips. And they had actually, I don't know if somebody intervened and got them together, but they got together in a room, and they agreed that they wanted better things for their community. Could we possibly get two rival gangs in our community together in the same room? And I realize that this is, you know, a police initiative also, and there's a lot of tact being involved within this, too. But to get them in together in the room and, you know, put a spin, they are the leaders of their sphere, so to speak, and they are the ones that can make the difference in every way, you know, in their sphere. And so, that just being said, is a suggestion, and I'm sure it's nothing novel to you, but I was just thinking about it as we were speaking about gangs today. Thank you.
Thank you. As we're developing the team to go to the national convening in Minneapolis in August, we are thinking, we're shaping it so that we have the right folks at the table, because there are going to be several of the city's representatives who have done similar efforts, and they're going to be sharing about how they've aligned their violent intervention strategies, whether it's ceasefire or hospital emergency response piece, allowing us to talk directly to leaders, elected leaders in those communities, and some of the young people who were involved. So we're looking forward to that, so that we can get some real-time feedback and learn how to best implement that in Hampton.
We're going to thank each one of you for your presentations, and thank the audience for its fortitude. The facilities are a little bit farther away here than they are in City Hall, so let's come back at 3:30.
Well, it is a briefing, so technically, is this thing on? How do you take this off?
I think we need to order something.
Yeah, but I think, I heard my voice.
This one?
No, this one. I don't know, I didn't touch it.
Hold on. Hold on. Off, off now.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about this whole thing.
Go on there, because they're moseying on.
Can't be in my chair.
I think that, yeah, like the basic things are the same because they have to be.
All right, here are the phone numbers, we're gonna get in trouble.
All right, come on. I am ready.
We're calling the city manager for the next item on our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is the informational update that council requested last month on animal control lease, leash law, potential changes. You may recall that last month, we had brought this and the number of animals issues to you all, seeking some guidance as to whether you wanted us to put ordinance changes on the agenda. Council pretty clearly came to the conclusion that you did not want to deal with a number of animals, but requested further data to make a final determination as to whether you wanted an ordinance change on the leash law. Mr. Bond is going to go over that information, and the goal of this presentation is to get that. Hopefully, we've answered your questions with data, and you can let us know whether we should indeed put an ordinance to amend our leash law on the August agenda or not.
Thank you. Just as a bit of background, as the city manager at Louisiana last month, we had a presentation on whether or not there needed to be a more strict leash law in the city of Hampton. At that presentation, we went over council's options, we talked about the current legal status, we talked about the public input, and input and recommendations from the Animal Control Advisory Commission, as well as staff's recommendations and rationales. Today's presentation, we give a really brief summary of what we kind of went over. We'll talk about a summary of the legal issues, the public input summary, the animal control advisory commissions, and staff's recommendations and rationales. Also addressed some specific questions that were asked during the June presentation. And for the public who may be watching, if you're interested in the entire presentation from last month, it's available on the council's website under the minutes, and the presentation is up and the video is up for that as well. When we talked about the leash law, we had basically three options. The first is maintaining the status quo and not making any changes. The next is to have a leash law with no exceptions, a very strict interpretation of a leash law. And the third is to enact a leash law, but to have exceptions for dogs who have been well-trained to be under voice command and have a permitted, have completed a permitted dog training course. Some of the legal history was, if you go to a strict leash law, it was going to require that you redefine some of the terms in our current statute to be more strict, to say that the only way of controlling the animal is by a physical leash. It also requires you to redefine some of the terms in statute. I won't go into any detail about that. All of those things are doable, they've been done in other jurisdictions. It's not just as simple as changing to say, "We want a strict leash law," but they can be accomplished. A leash law with the exceptions would require all of those things as far as definition adjustments, but it also would require establishing a permitting process and increase administrative costs in establishing a permitting process. The online polling and public input. It was conducted from January 7th through 24th. There were 680 Hampton residents who responded, and non-residents were excluded from the results that we talked about last time. There was a small majority who felt like we had a problem, it was about 55%, 43% said that there wasn't a problem with unleashed dogs. And for those who asked, "Should we have a leash law, a more strict leash law?" 76% of the people said yes, who responded to that. 23% said no. Should there be an exception for trained dogs? 34% of the people said yes. 59% of the people said no. And should the exceptions require permit? 28% of the people said yes. 35% of the people said no. 37%, which was larger than either one of them, didn't really respond and thought that wasn't applicable. What we learned from the comments, as well as the public input, was that people felt like there were a number of different issues, some of them larger than this, some of them not as large as this, and they were kind of all over the map about different concerns. The Animal Control Advisory Committee and Staff's Recommendations. Animal Control Advisory Committee's recommendation was to enact a leash law with no exceptions. The staff recommendation was not to make a change to the law, but to maintain the status quo. Rationale for the Animal Control Advisory Committee was that all dogs should be on leash when they're not on their owner's property. The dogs are unpredictable, even if they're well-trained. The dog owners should be able to walk their dogs without fear of dogs that are not on leash. The citizens should be able to be comfortably walking the streets and not fear dogs that are not on leash. That it would provide consistent rules for dog owners to know and to abide by, and that it would protect not only people who are walking, but also the dogs from harm from running into the street or other hazards that they may get into when they're off-leash. The staff rationale for recommending maintaining the status quo was that the current law provides remedies to punish owners for dogs that actually attack. We have not had significant issues with dogs under voice control. Proposed changes will increase the cost, and they're difficult to enforce. We don't think that it solves the current problems that we're experiencing based on the data, and we don't think that the additional strain on animal control resources will give you a high return for your investment in making the change. There were questions from council at the last council meeting. There was a question asked about what the other jurisdictions are doing. What are the dog attack statistics from 2014 through 2016? And what are the dog attack statistics from 2014 through 2016 in dog parks, the current dog parks? As far as jurisdictions, and Councilman Gray was kind enough to provide this information last time. Newport News does not have a strict law. It says that you can be under control by leash, cord, chain, or voice control. Virginia Beach does have a leash law saying, "A leash or lead or other means of physical restraint," is what it says. Chesapeake, yes, fence, chain, or leash or other physical restraint. Norfolk, yes, chain, cord, or leash. Portsmouth, no, you have fence, chain, leash, or the owner's or custodian's physical presence. And Suffolk is, yes, leash, lead, or other physical restraint. I was contacted by a member of Animal Control Advisory Committee who asked me to let you know that Pecosin also has a strict leash law. Yes. Okay. As far as dog attacks from 2014 to 2016, the first category is improper containment or strays. As you can see, in 2016, there were 54 of those incidents. In 2015, it was 38, and in 2014, there were 28. For dogs who attacked on their own property, and they may have been provoked, there's 27 of them in 2016, 21 in 2015, and two in 2014. For dogs who were actually on leash, there were six of those attacks in 2016, seven in 2015, six in 2014. For dogs who were intentionally let loose, or it was their negligence in letting them loose, we had two in 2016, two in 2015, and five in 2014. And for dogs who were under actual voice control, there was only one in 2016. There were none in 2015, and there were one in 2014. And so, as you can see from this chart, the vast majority are strays or those who have broken out of containment, and very few are actually, were reported for dogs who were actually under voice control. I was asked about the number of dog attacks that occurred in dog parks. And in 2014, there were three of those attacks. In 2015, there were three of those attacks. And in 2016, there were two of those attacks. So, once again, they were relatively small numbers. Once again, as I said earlier, the Animal Control Advisory Committee, who looked at this, did some research about other jurisdictions, heard from some of the public. Their recommendation was to enact a leash law with no exceptions. The staff, after considering all of that information as well, and looking at our current state, would recommend maintaining the status quo. Are there any questions?
Councilwoman Smith.
When you say no exceptions, if a dog is in their own yard?
They would not be covered by our current leash law. They wouldn't be considered as at-large if they're on their own property. For all of those that we're talking about, it's dogs who are not on their own property. And so, they would have to...
Okay, so that wouldn't be, you can have your dog on the property, not on a leash?
Yes, and that's under any of those statutes. And it's interesting, I'm glad that you brought that up, because a lot of times, I think, people conflate what this law would actually address. I know that we've had complaints about pit bulls and others that are in their yard off-leash and maybe threatening to people, or they consider them threatening. They wouldn't be covered by these laws, because the dog is actually on their own property. It's only if that dog left its property that it would be covered by one of these laws.
Steve, what's the rationale from the staff doing nothing? What's driving that from staff? What was their thinking?
The staff's rationale is that we currently have a law that requires that the animal be under your control. And the data that we have doesn't suggest that we have attacks that occur frequently from dogs that are not on leash. And so, we feel that it's not really that we're doing nothing, it's that the current law is adequate to address the issue. If you look at not only the dogs that were under voice control attacks, but the dogs, attacks that occurred in dog parks, if you add both of them together, there are half of the attacks that occurred on dogs that were actually on leashes. And so, we have no evidence, really, from the data, that a leash is a substantial prevention for having a dog attack.
So, maybe to say it another way, it's already against the law for a dog to attack, frankly, whether it's on the leash or off, right?
Correct.
And Steve, the data you're reporting is just through those where the attack that occurred was reported to animal control? So, it's quite possible there could be a lot of attacks that just happen, or quick incidents that happen in public that never really get reported to animal control?
That's correct, and that's correct for all of those categories. We only know what we get reported.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, we need to actually give direction to staff on how to proceed on this. That's why we came back a second time. So, just need to get a sense of where we are as a council on this particular matter. Okay, we can start in alphabetical order, we can start at this end and work our way down. How do you want to do it? All right, want to start down here with Councilman Gray?
Well, my preference is for option two, is that we have a leash law with no exceptions. And then, if the ordinance can be written, I don't know if, you know, I know how some other ordinances are written with, you know, an animal being on a chain. I don't know if a chain is the appropriate type of restraining device, but I know that there are ones that you purchase at an animal store or a pet shop and all of that. So, perhaps we could exclude chain from that if the ordinance is written with a leash, and describe what the appropriate type leash is.
Initially, I would have said do nothing, you know, based on the data. But I've heard from a few people, one lady was just telling me last night, and great dog, you know, no problem, you know, voice control, command. Yet another dog came in beside it, and the dog attacked the dog she was with. And she incurred substantial medical bills, along with the other dog was harmed. So, and the fear that people experience too, when a dog comes running up to them. So, I think I've changed my mind that I would go towards a leash law. I actually thought we even had a leash law in Hampton, you know, up to this point. But I would say with exception.
Well, I can tell you that my dog is on a leash if we're outside of our property. We have a fenced yard that our dog stays in, so of course, she's not on a leash then. But when we leave the property and go outside that fence, she is on a leash. And she's a very docile little dog, she's fun to be with. But I'm in favor of leash law.
Well, my position is that passing a leash law does nothing, because it is already against the law for your dog to be out of control. And I think it puts an added burden on animal control and an added expectation on part of our citizens that a leash law is going to make a difference. And unless we're also planning on adding a whole lot more animal control officers so that there are people around to handle the kinds of calls that I think we'll get, I don't see, it's not that I'm in favor of dogs attacking, I'm certainly not. But there are a lot of people in this community who've spent a lot of money training their animals and have their animals under control. And as this law does nothing more than what is already in existence, I don't see that there's anything to support it. The data certainly doesn't support it.
Mr. Bond, thank you for your presentation. As previously stated, it appears to me that we're trying to come up with a solution in the absence of a problem. Statistics that you have presented to us clearly demonstrate to me that there really isn't a problem. If there's a problem, it's with the dogs that were on leases, based on the data that you had presented to us. Certainly, I understand the fears, which I believe it was, ooh, was it Chicken Little thought the sky was falling too? But the data didn't support that. And with the absence of data, I'm certainly going to be inclined to support the same position that Vice Mayor Curtis is supporting. And there are a lot of people who have spent a lot of money to put their pets, their dogs, under voice control, and I just wonder, where do we get to the point where we get the government overreach? So, I want to be respectful to all parties, and certainly, I think we need to realize that this is going to cause an additional resource strain. I mean, you know, we'd need more police officers, but we're going to need a whole doggy police to try to enforce this, and it's practically going to be unenforceable. So, you know, so I just take the common sense approach and certainly support, again, support the position that Vice Mayor Curtis has stated, as well as the staff.
I too support no leash law. If I look at the statistics, and I look at on, on property, provoked attacks, they are the greatest attacks. So, having a leash law would not even take care of that situation, because you can have your dog in your yard with a leash law unleashed, because we can't tether. And so, that's where the majority of the attacks occur, when someone's provoking someone's dog that's enclosed in their yard. So, I'm gonna go along with Vice Mayor Curtis and Councilman Moffett and vote no.
I think we spent about two hours and some change with an update on safer clean initiatives and police crime statistics and strategies, and what we're doing as far as trying to assist our youth to grow up with more productive lives. And the sense of it is, when I asked the chief about our being a safe city, we are a safe city, and the likelihood of people being involved in random violence is really, really low, that most of the people who are engaged in shootings and things like that generally know each other. And yet, our public, we get the emails, we get the phone calls, we get the face-to-face conversations. In the sense of it is, when I asked the chief about our being a safe city, we are a safe city, and the likelihood of people being involved in random violence is really, really low, that most of the people who are engaged in shootings and things like that generally know each other, and yet, our public, we get the emails, we get the phone calls, we get the face-to-face conversations, where they tell us they don't feel safe in our city. And so, we invest in more police officers, and we invest in technology to try and do what probably can't be done, which is to try and help people feel really, really safe, or to try and impact crime a bit more, so people feel safer. We have individuals in our city who have said they don't feel safe being out when dogs are about, and they're not on leashes, and I think we have responsibility to help those individuals as much as possible feel safe. So, whether or not voice control, you know, my example last month was, we have police dogs and arson dogs that are very, very well-trained, and yet, when I see their handlers out with them, they're on leashes. And so, that may not help the problem of dogs who run out of yards and attack other individuals or other dogs, but for individuals who are out in public places, moving about, who have an unease about being approached by somebody else's dog who's not on a leash, or even on a leash, I think we owe it to them, and so therefore, I'm going to support having the city move toward a leash law with no exceptions.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that, we will plan to put the changes to the ordinance that would be necessary to effectuate a leash law with no exceptions on the August agenda. And that concludes our staff open session, work session items.
I ask now, are there any regional issues? Any new business? I ask the clerk to read the motion for closed session.
The motion to convene your closed session is for a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711.8.1, .3, and .7, to discuss appointments as listed on the agenda, appointments to the Citizens Police Advisory Group, CPAG, and the Citizens Engagement Advisory Review Commission, CRK, to discuss personnel matters concerning council appointees, to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly-held real property in the area of the Kiketan Road corridor, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters pertaining to environmental and land use ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Curtis.
Aye.
Councilman Gray.
Aye.
Councilman Hobbs.
Aye.
Councilman Moffett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Snead.
Aye.
Mayor Tuck.
Aye.
We are going to adjourn and reconvene in the closed session room, wherever that is, at four o'clock.